Good afternoon and welcome to today's joint committee hearings on governmental operation, technology, and public housing. At this time, could everybody please put your cellphones on vibrant or silent mode? If you wish to testify, you have to fill out this testimony slip in the front dais in the sergeant and arms desk. If you're online and you want to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you, Chair. You may begin.
Recording in progress. Good afternoon. I'm City Councilmember Sandra Ong, Chair of the Committee on Governmental Operations. I'm thrilled to be conducting today's jointly hearing, sorry, hearing jointly with committees on technology and public housing, and I'd like to thank my co-chairs, councilmembers Jennifer Gutierrez and Alexa Aviles, on all their hard work in putting this hearing together. I would also like to recognize my colleagues who have joined us today, councilmembers Shulman, Menon, Kagan, Palladino, Hanif, Abreu, Delarosa. At today's hearing, the committees will review the work of the 3-1-1 Customer Service Center in providing critical government services information to New York City residents, businesses, and visitors. In addition, the committees will examine some of the unique challenges that certain communities have faced in accessing the 3-1-1 system. I know Chair Aviles will be speaking about some of the obstacles that NYCHA residents have encountered when lodging housing complaints via 3-1-1 and NYCHA's own customer contact center. I share your concerns and I look forward to exploring this issue in greater detail today. Having said that, I'd like to focus my comments on the issue that's been very important to me for a very long time, the challenges faced by limited English proficient community in accessing government service information, including through 3-1-1. As we all know, New York City is a city of immigrants. It's also one of the most linguistically diverse cities in the world. New Yorkers speak over 200 different languages, and nearly half of the city residents speak a language other than English at home. Roughly 25% of 1.8 million New Yorkers are considered limited English proficient. To its credit, 3-1-1 call centers offers interpretation services in over 175 different languages and dialects. Unfortunately, callers seeking to utilize these services frequently encounter obstacles and delays to prevent them from accessing the information and resource they need. In an ideal world, a caller would dial 3-1-1, select their preferred language, and then immediately be connected to an interpreter who can converse in that language selected. In practice, however, callers who do not speak English often have to request translation services assistance from an English-speaking operator, then the caller has to wait often for extended periods of time before being connected to an interpreter. In some cases, when an interpreter finally picks up, they don't speak the correct language, leading to further confusion and delay. In other cases, the caller doesn't realize they're waiting for interpreter and hangs up before they can be connected to someone who can help them. I understand that in a city as linguistically diverse as New York, operating a 3-1-1 call center represents immense logistical challenge, and I know our partners at 3-1-1 are committed to improving language access. But I also want to be very clear, limited English proficient New Yorkers should not receive second-rate service simply because they speak another language. Their needs are no less important, and they deserve the same level of access to government services and information as their English-speaking neighbors. I'm happy to say two bills being heard by the Committee on Technology today are bills I introduced in order to improve the translation services offered by 3-1-1. The first bill is introduction number 206, which will require 3-1-1 to report on a monthly basis the amount of time it takes for a caller to be connected to an interpreter. The second bill, introduction number 296, will require 3-1-1 to utilize automatic language recognition software to assist in identifying a caller's language. I am hopeful that these bills will address some of the issues that limited English proficient New Yorkers have encountered while calling 3-1-1, and I look forward to discussing them in detail with the administration. And with that, I'd like to thank the members of the public, the representatives of the administration who has come to testify today. I'd also like to thank Sebastian Bocchi and C.J. Murray from the central staff for their work in putting this hearing together. And finally, I'd like to thank my own chief of staff, Alexander Hart, for his assistance. And now I turn it over to my co-chairs, Councilmember Gutierrez for a statement.
Thank you, Chair Ong. Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, and I'm the Chair of the Committee on Technology. I am happy to join my colleagues, Chair Ong and Chair Aviles, in holding this joint hearing on ensuring equal access to 3-1-1, and I'm looking forward to discussing the 3-1-1 accessibility, especially as it relates to the experience of limited English proficient New Yorkers and NYCHA residents, who make up close to a quarter of New York City's population. New York City's 3-1-1 service is important, and as such, we must do the work to understand its current state of accessibility and what could be done to expand its accessibility for the benefit of all New Yorkers. The significance of New York City's 3-1-1 service should not be understated, as it provides the residents and visitors of New York City with a simple, single point of contact for almost every city department. The 3-1-1 system makes it easier for New Yorkers and visitors to communicate with the city government, and likewise provides the city with a direct line of communication to its populace. Examples of these communications include announcements about city services, alternate parking information, resident reports on quality-of-life issues, and requests for city services. Recent history has also emphasized the significance of 3-1-1 access. NYC 3-1-1 has received unprecedented, unprecedented high call volumes, with pandemic-related issues and tropical storm impacts comprising the bulk of tens of millions of calls and requests made to 3-1-1 in 2020 and 2021. Clearly, having NYC 3-1-1 available and accessible is vital. Since the inception of the 3-1-1 system in 2003, NYC 3-1-1 has evolved to provide services through text messages, mobile applications, and even social media. But while we are proud of the growth of NYC 3-1-1, we understand that there is still room to improve. For instance, many service request types still do not have the option to attach pictures or videos. In addition, submitting service requests can be overly complex, requiring the user to go through multiple prompts and webpages to finally submit their complaint. Sometimes submitting a service request is not even possible, as NYC 3-1-1 can redirect a user to its own webpage or an agency webpage that does not accept service requests, either due to technical problems or other issues. This leaves New Yorkers often with little choice but to abandon their attempt to submit a service request. Moreover, NYC 3-1-1 still does not allow for the submission of complaints on some critical topics such as illicit film production activity and broken traffic lights. Many have also highlighted GPS location issues, leading to an inability to provide accurate location information for their requests, while others emphasize how 3-1-1 can too easily close cases after insufficient investigation from responding agencies, with little opportunity to follow up on issues if they persist. Furthermore, unfortunately, not all 3-1-1 services are available in languages other than English, like Chair Ong referenced. New York City is the center of ethnic and cultural diversity, with about 150 countries represented by its residents. Having 3-1-1 provide language access for all New Yorkers would improve the vital connection between New Yorkers and the city government, and would also improve the government's ability to understand and be wary of the issues faced by the various ethnic communities who call our city their home. To improve our NYC 3-1-1 services, the following bills in the Technology Committee are being considered today. Intro number 55, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, which would require Do-It to create a separate link for COVID-19 testing site complaints on the 3-1-1 website and mobile app. Intro number 167, sponsored by Councilmember Holden, which would allow 3-1-1 mobile app or website users to submit a request or complaint in no more than four steps. Intro number 206, sponsored by Chair Ong, which would require Do-It's Commissioner to submit a monthly report to the mayor and the Speaker of the Council on the wait times for individuals with limited English proficiency who called the NYC 3-1-1 Customer Service Center to be connected to an interpreter if requested. Intro number 240, sponsored by me, which would require Do-It to update the complaint types on the 3-1-1 Customer Service Center website and mobile device platforms, and submit a semi-annual report to the mayor and the Speaker of the Council on the updating of 3-1-1 complaint types. And intro number 296, sponsored by Chair Ong, which would require the development of a protocol for identifying the languages spoken by callers to 3-1-1. These are bills that present opportunities for improving the function and oversight on our city's 3-1-1 service. I am looking forward to hearing testimony from the administration, experts, and community advocates, and learning what is currently being done to improve access to 3-1-1, as well as what more could be done. I will now turn it over to Councilmember Aviles.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I am Councilmember Alexa Aviles, Chair of the Committee of Public Housing, and I want to thank also my co-chairs, Councilmember Ong and Councilmember Gutierrez, for holding this hearing. I'd also like to thank all the NYCHA residents, for, NYCHA residents, advocates, and other members of the public for attending today. My co-chairs have already discussed the value of 3-1-1 in providing services to New Yorkers more broadly, so as Chair of Public Housing, I'd like to focus in on why it's important for NYCHA residents to receive a voice at the table today. Services like 3-1-1 aren't merely a tool. They're essential for tenants to register complaints about subpar housing conditions and to request repairs when needed. 3-1-1 is not just a way to lodge a complaint or make a repair request. It provides accountability mechanism to ensure that the city follows through on those complaints or requests. NYCHA residents have long been kept from accessing this critical resource. Instead of contacting 3-1-1 like any other New Yorker, they use NYCHA's own customer contact center. We might hear NYCHA insists that their customer contact center is just as good, if not better, for meeting residents' needs, but complaints and work orders registered with CCC are not publicly available, and there are no consequences when NYCHA fails to deliver on this request. We already know that NYCHA has a $40 billion capital repair backlog. We know that there have been decades of federal disinvestment. We know that the agency is struggling. But at the end of the day, the people who suffer the most because of these big, sweeping problems are the residents themselves, and that means we need to provide them with the best possible means of accessing services. They deserve their voices to be heard, for their homes to be in good repair, and for the means of holding NYCHA accountable when violations aren't corrected. In order to right this wrong, the City Council enacted Local Law 127 last year to better integrate 3-1-1 and the customer contact center. The law requires 3-1-1 to take complaints from NYCHA residents and to publish annual reports on complaints and requests at NYCHA. Previously, when a 3-1-1 user called about an issue at NYCHA development, they were simply routed back to the call center. But now we are hearing reports that the law is being ignored and that nothing much has actually changed. Again, I must underscore, NYCHA residents are New York City residents. They deserve, and quite frankly, pay for, all the goods and services that the New York City government is compelled to provide. They do not need to be isolated, set apart, or treated as second-class citizens. They should have top-notch, quality-responsive public services from all New York City agencies, including HPD, including 3-1-1, and every agency in our city government. And that's not the only problem with NYCHA and 3-1-1. We've also learned that Rad and PAC tenants are in a uniquely difficult situation. When they call 3-1-1, they're told their buildings are not registered, so it's the same old cycle, and they're punted back to the call center. When they call the call center, they say they are no longer under private, they are no longer part of NYCHA. It is an awful cycle. So when they call, when they call the call center, excuse me, as I mentioned, they're told now they're under private management. So which is it? What recourse do the tenants have? Do these tenants, excuse me, what does the administration need to do to fix this, to make sure they have clear lines of guidance? The committee recognizes that integrating these services is not a fix to all, obviously, of NYCHA's problems, or that it will magically resolve the backlog of the 600,000-plus outstanding work orders. But at a bare minimum, we need to ensure that NYCHA residents have a way to track what's going on with their work orders, the same as any other resident in New York City. Today, the committee expects to hear from the administration about why NYCHA residents still do not have the same access that every other New Yorker does, and why we, as a city council, and what we, as a city council, can do to strengthen the law's requirements. I'd also like to briefly touch on Resolution Number 68, sponsored by Councilmember Kagan. This resolution calls on New York State Legislature and HUD to make serious action to improve accountability over NYCHA by auditing how NYCHA responds to residents' complaints and requests. If NYCHA is closing work order tickets without doing the work, we should know. If NYCHA is taking an unacceptably long time to reserve, to resolve an issue, especially one that affects residents' health and safety, like heat and hot water, we should know. If NYCHA isn't providing residents a way to track the work orders, we should know. That's what this bill is about. It is about accountability. So thank you again for joining us today. I look forward to a productive conversation. And with that, I will now turn it over to Councilmember Menon to say a few words about her bill, along with other bill sponsors.
Thank you so much. I really want to thank Chair Aviles, Chair Gutierrez, and Chair Ong for today's incredibly important hearing. Even today, the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene classifies the COVID-19 pandemic as a medium alert level in the city of New York. While New Yorkers can obviously now test at home, they can also visit testing sites, both public and private, across the city. Unfortunately, my office has heard from many constituents that there is no standardized process for 3-1-1 to assist with testing site complaints. Intro number 55 would have the Department of Information Technology and Telecommunications create a category when contacting 3-1-1 for tracking and referring all COVID-19 testing site complaints. During the height of the Omicron variant wave, testing sites that promised results in one to two days literally returned results in 10 days or later, if at all. Other constituents who contacted my office felt uncomfortable with invasive questions about their personal information, believing that these testing sites were a scam. When New Yorkers call 3-1-1 today to complain about a COVID testing site, 3-1-1 is not taking the complaint, and instead is referring callers' complaints to the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, the New York State Department of Health, or the private organization behind the testing site. This is not accountability. New Yorkers deserve clear answers when calling about testing sites. This legislation would make an accountable and transparent system for New Yorkers. There's no reason for a confusing process when contacting 3-1-1 after more than two years after the start of the pandemic. New York City's 3-1-1 must track complaints of specific COVID-19 testing locations within the city so that we can take action and stop bad actors. After this legislation was introduced, the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection did create, at my request, an intake website for reporting COVID testing sites that misrepresent turnaround times. This is a great step forward in protecting New Yorkers, but there is much more accountability that has to occur. I thank the chairs for allowing me to speak, and I look forward to today's hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Menon. I'd also like to recognize Councilmembers Sanchez, Boccher, Osay for joining us today, and I'd like now to welcome Councilmember Kagan to give a brief statement about Resolution
Thank you, Chair Aviles, Chair Gutierrez, Chair Ong, for this opportunity to introduce my Resolution 68, together with my colleagues, many of my colleagues co-signed with this resolution, asking for New York State Legislature and New York and the Federal HUD, Housing and Urban Department, to audit NYCHA managers' responsiveness to tenants' complaints. What is going on for many, many decades, I would say, is completely, absolutely unacceptable, and cannot be explained by chronic disinvestment to NYCHA. We don't need $40 billion for property manager to be at tenant association meeting. We don't need $40 billion to respond to emails or phone calls, complaints from tenants. We don't need $40 billion for many of these things. So my resolution is very simple. It calls for New York State Legislature and federal government HUD to audit NYCHA property managers' responsiveness to tenants' complaints. Every day, I'm spending most of my day, every day, I represent Coney Island and Marlborough Houses. I spend hours and hours dealing with lack of heat and hot water, lack of cooking gas, non-working elevators, water leaks in apartments, roads, rats and roaches infestation, and I can go on and on and on. It's absolutely unacceptable, and I believe that property managers should face some kind of consequences for ignoring tenants' concerns and calls and emails for many, many months. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
We'll now call up our first panel. Our first scheduled panelist is Aixa Torres. After that, we will hear testimony from the administration. Ms. Torres, you will have three minutes to provide your testimony.
I was in a meeting with the TA presidents from NYCHA, from Manhattan South and North, and with the borough president, and so I thank you for allowing me to speak. We're going to talk about the call center. We're going to talk about 3-1-1. And we're also going to talk about the blatant discrimination when it comes to residents in public housing, when they call 3-1-1, when NYCHA has not responded to the needs of the residents in terms of repairs or things that need to be done. Before I came to call, I spoke to my attorney, and we were talking about, because we had an issue in Alfred E. Smith, and we did a, we were doing a 3-1-1 complaint about our health issues. As I speak to you today, the health issues with the air quality in Alfred E. Smith are becoming dire. And so we were then sent right back to NYCHA, put through a loop on the 718. The call center has been the worst thing that has ever happened to the residents in public housing. That call center needs to be dismantled, needs to be the way it was, and nobody's going to lose their job if the unions have a question, because everybody who's in the call center should be assigned, there's 300 and something developments assigned to a development, where they're the one person who people know, this is the person I go to, to file my complaints and my tickets, get a receipt, and know what's going to happen. Not this fiasco that when you go on the call, it goes through the loop, and, and that's in English. Forget about if you ask for a language, right? And I've gotten complaints, and my development is basically Spanish, Asian, Chinese, Asian, and I do have other Asian residents that are not Chinese-speaking, and then English, of course, right? And the calls don't get through. And so the issue becomes one of, how do you document that you've made a call or you've tried to do a repair while your apartment is falling apart? I'm sitting here, when I leave here, I'm going to the clinic to get a blood test and an X-ray because of mold in my apartment. The health issue that this has created, and the fact that we really don't have a system where we can actually document, especially for the elderly and those who are non-English-speaking, to be able to say, "I called," or "Somebody listened to me," is unconscionable. And I thank you for listening to me on behalf of not only my district and my development, but all the residents who live in public housing, interim chair, and I sit on the Citywide Council of Presidents.
Thank you so much, Ms. Torres. I think we can go into... Thank you. And I'd like to welcome Councilmember Robert Holden, sponsor of introduction number 167 to give a statement on his bill.
Thank you, Chair, for providing us the opportunity today to discuss my bill, intro 167, which would allow 3-1-1 mobile application or website users to submit a request or complaint with no more than four steps. I am a big proponent of 3-1-1, as so, you know, so are my constituents. My precinct, the 104 precinct, which covers much of my district, had 21,000 3-1-1 calls year-to-date. So that's second in the city, the highest number of calls in any precinct in, like I mentioned, in the city. I use 3-1-1 daily, so I know the frustration my constituents go through when the process to use 3-1-1 drags out unnecessarily. We need the user experience to be easy and efficient. What is the problem? You know, we identify the problem, where is the problem located, and you answer it. New Yorkers are always on the move. If the app or webpage has too many questions for us, a simple complaint, or the user comes away with a feeling of frustration, there's a good chance that that New Yorker is never going to use 3-1-1 service again, and they get frustrated. So when 3-1-1 is at its best, the service promotes civic engagement and shows New Yorkers that city agencies care about their concerns. There is also a gratifying feeling to the process, you know, you see the problem, you report it, and the city takes action to fix that problem. So we should not underestimate the sense of community and responsibilities New Yorkers feel when they see the system working. The last council passed my bill that improved the accuracy of 3-1-1's map. I am looking forward to working with colleagues to also pass intro 167, which would mandate that Do-It, 3-1-1, and all city agencies who are part of the 3-1-1 system, take a long, hard look at 3-1-1 intakes and determine how they can simplify the process, making it more than, no more than four steps to the end user. I look forward to hearing the testimony today, and thank Chair Gutierrez and the rest of the chairs and the staff of the Technology Committee, especially Council Irene Bahovsky to my right and my staff for drafting this legislation. Thank you, chairs.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd now like to call up the representatives from the administration to provide their testimony. To all members of the administration who will be offering testimony or available for questions, please raise your right hands. I will call on each of you individually for a response. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Joe Morisro? Eva Trimble? Tony Woodin? Thank you. You may begin your testimony.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Chair Ong, Chair Gutierrez, Chair Aviles, and members of the City Council Committee on Governmental Operations, Technology, and Public Housing. My name is Joe Morisro, and I am Deputy Commissioner and Executive Director of New York City 3-1-1 under the Office of, under the Office of Technology and Innovation, also known as OTI. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on 3-1-1 operations, language access, and the legislation before the committees. Here with me today is Eva Trimble, Executive Vice President for Strategy and Innovation at the New York City Housing Authority, and Tony Woodin, ASL Direct Program Supervisor at the Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities. It has been my honor to serve as the Executive Director of 3-1-1 since 2008, and to represent the wonderful and diverse team of people that make up the customer service frontline of city government. 3-1-1 reports directly to OTI, in alignment that underscores the importance of this operation and its critical service to the city. OTI provides support for the 3-1-1 organization and works collaboratively with 3-1-1 on the continual evolution and enhancements to the service delivery and the customer experience of 3-1-1. As Executive Director, I oversee all aspects of 3-1-1, from the operation of the most familiar component, the call component, the call center, to the creation and implementation of multiple customer-facing channels, performance results, and quality control measures, as well as interaction with city agencies and data collection. New York City is the, is one of the most multicultural places in the world, and its diversity makes it the greatest place to live. I thank the council for inviting me in to discuss how 311 provides quick and easy access to New York City government services and information with the highest possible level of customer service in New York's various communities. As you may know, 311 just reached a milestone in customer service this month when we received the 500-millionth customer contact, which was a call in Spanish for the IDNYC card program. 311 is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Customers can get help in 175 languages by calling 311. People who are deaf or hard of hearing or have speech disability can text us at 311692, also use a mobile app and Twitter, or use a video relay service, or use TTY or text telephone. The 311 process relies on systems supported by OTI and partnerships with city agencies to ensure a customer has access to information, assistance, and services through a variety of channels, including the call center, 311 online, text, mobile app, and social media. To understand 311 operation and customer experience, it is helpful to understand the flow of 311 service delivery, from customer inquiries and requests to the answers provided and actions taken, and the confirmation provided. With few exceptions, public interactions with 311 result in one of the following outcomes. First, it's an information request. As an example, when is my recycling pickup day? Second is a referral to an external entity. An example is a transfer to the MTA for services that they handle. And third is a service request, sometimes known as a complaint. An example is submitting a ticket. Since 311's launch in March 2003, it has received over 345 million calls and an additional 155 million customer contacts in our digital channels. Originally launched as a call center, New York City 311 has evolved into the most comprehensive municipal government customer service platform in the nation. 311 received 40 million customer contacts in 2021 and has been a vital source for New Yorkers throughout the pandemic. On an average day, 311 interacts with over 100,000 constituents, and for an average month, 311 receives 1.6 million calls, 1.4 million online visits to the companion 311 online website, 187,000 mobile app touches, 30,000 text messages, and serves 2,300 customers on social media, in addition to publishing city programs, information and services on our 100, to our 433,000 social media followers. For further context, on an annual basis, New York City 311 receives more calls than all other U.S. city 311 call centers combined. The 311 mission is aligned with the administration's goals and vision on equity. Most notably, it focuses on providing the public with equitable service delivery through quick, easy access to all New York City government services and information while maintaining the highest possible level of customer service. The 311 team is focused on meeting our customers where they are, by providing an array of channel options to, to contact the city, ranging from robust self-service solutions to outstanding customer service delivered by professional, polite, and well-trained representatives. In annual customer satisfaction surveys conducted by the CFI Group over the past decade, 311 ranked two, I'm sorry, 311 ranked equal to or better in delivering customer service than the best contact centers in the private sector, and also far surpassed the best in government centers. Historically, 311's aggregate net promoter score, known as NPS, the leading metric for gauging customer satisfaction across all industries in the U.S., 311 exceeded the scores of Apple, JetBlue, and Trader Joe's. This outstanding performance reflects the dedication and commitment of the customer service professionals who work at 311 and proudly serve their fellow New Yorkers. It is for these reasons that New York City 311 is the recognized model for service delivery and performance reporting for governments across the nation and around the world who studied the New York City 311 model when considering launching their customer service platforms. On language access, local law authority requires covered agencies to appoint language access coordinators, translate communally distributed documents into, into 10 designated languages, provide telephonic interpretation in at least 100 languages, and develop a language access implementation plan, among other requirements. 311 is in compliance with this law. 311, 311 provides telephonic interpretation up to 175 languages through a third-party vendor, Language Line. Language Line provides interpretation and translation services for up to 175 languages and is available for free to customers 24 hours a day, seven days a week. 311 also provides additional options for customers who speak a language other than English or may be limited English proficient. For the phone channel, a customer can access announcements and messages in the language-integrated voice response system. Spanish speakers can utilize the natural language understanding application to receive information and answers to frequently asked questions without having to wait to speak with an agent. Spanish speakers may also receive assistance from a 311 customer service representative who speaks Spanish. Annually, 311 services approximately 1 million calls in languages other than English and provides, has provided service in 92 non-English languages in 2021. We understand that serving such a diverse customer base comes with challenges and that there is more work to be done. To address this, 311 has partnered with the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs to review 311 and engages with customers with limited English proficiency. We have already made improvements to customer service, to customer experience handling as a result. Based on council feedback, 311 implemented a technology enhancement that allows the language name to be passed to the call center representative when a customer selects a language option. Now, when a customer presses a language option, like Russian or Korean, the representative receives a pop-up that indicates the language preference. This allows faster connection to an interpreter and a better customer experience. 311 implemented customer satisfaction surveys in 2021 in the 10 designated citywide languages that leverage our technology and align with our business practices. We are learning directly from the LEP community where we excel and where we need improvement. Lastly, I'm excited to announce that 311 is working to roll out a pilot program in fiscal year '23 to expand our service to the WhatsApp messaging platform. Keeping with our motto, meeting our customers where they are, 311 will expand the number of customer service channels available to the public to better reach all New Yorkers. I will now turn to the legis, to the legislation under consideration today. On Intro 55, the operation of a COVID-19 testing site complaint. We understand the intent of this bill and support a more streamlined approach to reporting complaints directly, I'm sorry, reporting complaints related to COVID-19 testing sites. However, as currently written, 311 would not be able to meet the requirements to fulfill this legislation due to the multitude of agencies covering COVID test sites. We are open to discussing ways to achieve the intent of the legislation within the parameters of the 311 system's complaint feedback loop. Intro 167, the number of steps to submit 311 service requests on the website and mobile application. I understand and appreciate the desire to streamline the process for submitting complaints, and where possible, we encourage agencies to collect information in the most efficient way. Whenever the service request is driven by 311, it is always four steps or under. Circumstances under which it may be more than four steps depends on whether the form is on an agency's legacy platform. For many complaints via the website, 311 presents the four-step process as a what, where, when, sorry, what, where, who, and review. This allows for a consistent customer experience across many service requests. On mobile, there may be even fewer steps. There are circumstances under which an agency's form is used for intake that may not follow the same four-step pattern. If there are specific complaints that require more than four steps, I will take that back to our team to discuss with the agency in charge of addressing those service requests. Intro 206, reporting on wait times for interpreters. We support the idea of creating more transparency and accountability of language access. We are currently reviewing available data with our vendor and believe we may be able to report monthly averages of wait times. We look forward to discussing this bill further to reach an agreement on level of data to share based on availability. Intro 240, requiring 311 to update complaint types available by the effective date of a new local law that involves service requests. Having 311 monitoring all citywide legis, citywide legislation, excuse me, is not a core competency of 311. 311 does not create service requests unilaterally. We work hand-in-hand with agencies on new service requests to make sure they sync up with the agency's technology and with their internal workflows. 311 relies on agencies to review legislation impacting them and define how to meet the requirements of the law. When an agency decides they will accept complaints through the 311 system, they contact 311 and OTI to create tests, to create, test, and deploy the complaint form with the objective of meeting the law's required implementation date. And finally, on Intro 296, requiring 311 to develop a protocol for identifying the language spoken by a customer to 311 using automated language recognition software. We embrace the spirit of this bill and understand the eagerness to employ artificial intelligence to enhance 311 customer service. However, as written, the legislation requires the use of automated language recognition software that, to our knowledge, is not yet available. We will continue to monitor new technologies as they become commercially accessible. If council members have any suggestions, we are eager to learn more about technologies that could help us improve current customer service operations. Finally, on behalf of my colleagues across all of 311, I thank Chairs Zong, Gutierrez, Avilas, and committee members for your time and the opportunity to testify. I appreciate your comments at the outset, recognizing the importance of 311 and the credit to the 311 people who deliver customer service to the city. I am happy to take your questions.
Thank you for joining us today. I do have a couple of questions. The first one I have is how many call center operators does 311 currently employ or has under contract?
So we have a total 311 organization staff of 386. The call center staff, frontline agents, and call center supervisors, it's a little bit over 300.
Great. And then, and how many of them are able to assist callers in Spanish?
All of them are able to assist callers in Spanish by using Language Line, our translation vendor.
How about are they able to assist without using the Language Line?
I don't have a precise number. I don't know what the percent of that would be.
Great. It'd be great if you'd get back to us on that.
I sure will.
And beyond Spanish, actually. So basically, I'm asking how many of the operators can speak other languages other than English?
I get you. So operators can speak English or English and Spanish. None of the operators speak a language other than English and Spanish.
Okay. So there is no other, so the operators either are bilingual, English and Spanish, and none other languages?
That is correct.
Thank you. And currently, does 311 have the technological abilities to track the time it takes for a caller to be connected to interpreter?
Yes, we do. We do that in partnership with our vendor, Language Line.
And how do you track this information?
We use telecom-related reports that have been able to track the time by language, as well as the connect time it takes from the call reaching an interpreter, from the agent, 311 agent, connecting to Language Line to an interpreter answering that call.
Thank you. I'm sorry, could you just repeat that again? I'm sorry, I can't hear you that well. Yeah, it's very hard, yeah.
Okay. I thought I was too loud. I'm sorry. Okay. Give me a moment, I'm going to pull this chair forward, and I'll pull this microphone forward and see if that's better. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. The time it takes to reach an interpreter, I believe, was the question. And we measure that from the time a 311 agent dials to the interpreter and the, and interpreter actually answers. So that, that's the interval.
Okay. So you do have technology to track that time?
Correct.
Great. Thank you. And according to a 311 language access plan, it's the goal of 311 to ensure that the average wait time to be connected to interpreter in the four most commonly requested languages is 30 seconds or less. What is, I mean, what are the concrete steps that 311 has taken to ensure that this goal is met? Has this goal been met? Actually, I'm just going to ask this, yeah.
I appreciate both of those questions. So I'm pleased to say yes, has this goal been met? It has been met and exceeded. And I'll speak to how that works. So I appreciate that opportunity. What we, for the top languages, it is less than, is 30 seconds or less. We work closely with our vendor, Language Line. I'll, I'll take a moment to share what that looks like from a provider standpoint. Language Line is the largest interpretation and translation services vendor in the United States and ranks in the world with literally thousands of clients and, more importantly, tens of thousands of employees, which gives them a tremendous economy of scale that the city gets to leverage. So we have a very good relationship. We've been working with them for many years. We benefit from the fact that they compete in the open marketplace, and they have research and development that the city wouldn't necessarily have, they have customer experience and knowledge that the city wouldn't necessarily have. So by partnering with them, we've learned, you know, the best way to position, how to talk to a customer when you're going to bring an interpreter on, how to interact with a customer in those situations. And we have a contract and a process that allows us to give them feedback. So we constantly monitor their performance as well as their qualitative, as well as their quantitative performance. We do that by measuring wait times, as you mentioned. We also do that through our own internal process of quality assurance and something we call CX, Customer Experience, where we listen to those calls, engage how well things worked for the customer, for the agent, and for the interpreter. I'll close that by going back to your original question with, are we doing less than 30 seconds in the top languages? For year-to-date 2022, those top languages average less than 10 seconds to be answered by the interpretation vendor.
So let's get a little bit more into how this works. So when someone dials 311 and selects one of the non-six English language options, when is interpreter, is translator already online by the time the caller is connected with interpreter?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the question.
So when a caller calls, and I know there's a top six languages where they say it in that own language, you know, if you need like assistance, you could hit five in, I'll just say Mandarin. So when you hit that five, what happens after that?
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. For those languages that have that greeting, there's a few things I think I should call out that are notable, similar to English language customers and Spanish language customers, that greeting presents something that is probably the most sought-after and desired piece of information that 311 provides on a daily basis, and that is ultimate site parking status. It is by far the highest number, the, the reason most people call 311. So that information in all languages is presented right up front in that automated system, which is a, an interaction that customers prefer. It's a quick, it's easy, it's a binary, it's in effect, or it's not in effect. That language menu will then also give them additional information or options. And most importantly, it closes by saying, you will be connected to an English-speaking operator. Please remain on the line. They will bring on a translator, or I think it says interpreter, excuse me. So that's a way to set the customer's expectation. At that point, the customer will land with an English-speaking agent. If they pressed one of those options, the agent knows which language the customer has selected. And as I mentioned in my testimony, credit to City Council for calling that out a couple of years ago and working with us to add that as an enhancement. So the agent actually knows that. The agent then has an automatic connection to Language Line, literally click a, click a link, click an icon, I should say. And they select that language, so it speeds up the process with Language Line. Language Line then has within 30 seconds to answer that call, and as I mentioned, they, they exceed that objective in those top languages.
Thank you. So you're saying when that agent who speaks English picks up that non-English call, that wait time to a Language Line provider would be less than, you said?
The goal is less than 30 seconds. The performance so far this year is less than 10 seconds for those top four languages.
Okay. And how about when it's not those top languages that's on the 311 line?
In total, for all languages handled by Language Line this year, through a report from, through the month of May, I know we're at the end of June, but through the month of May, the average was 10 seconds.
Even for those?
Total average.
Okay.
All, all languages, total averages.
Okay. Is, is there a way to track what it is, what's the wait time for different types of languages?
Right now, we can track it for, I believe, five or six specific languages, and then a category, a roll-up category of all other languages. And then within that, we see the total wait time, but we don't see the breakdown of the individual languages. There can often be, you know, one or two calls per language in that all other category.
Okay. And is, there's one last question on this. I do notice this step where, you know, when someone picks a language that's not English, that know, when someone picks a language that's not English, that it, it's the English agent who's gonna come back on that line. Is there a way, just technology-wise, that if you already picked, like, number five, which is the one for Mandarin, that it goes straight to a person who can speak that language to, you know, does the English agent needs to be that in-between person?
I, I follow the question. Thank you. Currently, the, the, both the process and the structure do require that. We don't have a customer correct, connect directly to a vendor interpreter, for example, because the 311 agent needs to be able to guide and direct that call and provide the necessary information. So, the primary step that we take, and, and again, a lot of this is based on working through processes and experience with, with our vendor, and, and also I'll share with other 311s around the country who experienced this. The goal is have the customer reach the agent, have the agent get the interpreter services, in our case, Language Line, on as quickly as possible, and then let the agent present what's needed to be done, and then the interpreter just serves as an interpreter, rather than the interpreter being confronted with, "How do I solve this problem for New York City versus someone else?" or, you know, not knowing the 311 process. So, it does land with an agent first, and then an interpreter second.
Right. So, I think now you're pointing out some of the limitations with using Language Line. So, my next question is, you noted in also your testimony that 311 utilizes the Natural Language Understanding Direct Dialogue Technology for Spanish callers. Can you explain what is that technology, and how's it being used by 311?
Thank you for that question. We've been using Natural Language Understanding Technology since, I believe, 2014, and for Spanish language applications since, I believe, 2018. What it does is allow the customer in language to speak to our interactive system. The system, the application is known as Natural Language Understanding. It's provided by an industry-leading vendor named Nuance, and the customer will speak in their language. The system recognizes their question, and what it will do is provide them an option of, various options that they can choose from for either information such as, I'll use an example, for my location, what's the, what's my garbage and recycling collection? They'll receive that information back in language, or they may have a question that needs to be routed to an external entity. So, the city doesn't handle questions for the Department of Labor, for example, and someone may have that question. So, in language, it will explain to them, "You're going to be transferred to the New York State Department of Language," and execute that transfer. It can also provide information such as the alternate side parking information.
So, currently, right now, it's for Spanish, is there technology available for other languages?
For right now, we don't have access to that. Our Nuance partner does provide English and Spanish, but have not yet come forward with a product that we can use for other languages.
Thank you. And just one last question on this, and I'll turn it over to my other chair, sorry. Do, right now, 311 uses speech detection technology to help call center operators with identifying caller's language?
Right now, we do not.
Have 311 considered using such a technology?
I appreciate that question, and the answer is emphatically yes. We have been, for some time, been pursuing that. We've, in, in advance of this hearing, connected with our partner, vendor partners, both Language Line as well as Nuance, who are, again, industry leaders in their space. They are not aware of existing commercially available software that would provide that. There are a number of one-to-one type of examples of applications that do translation. They often rely on text, but, or are limited to, like I say, a one-to-one situation. We are very much open to that, and very much would look to see how a software that could work on a scale would, would be able to, we'd be able to use and incorporate.
Great, thank you. I do have more questions, but I'm gonna just turn it over to my other chairs right now.
Thank you.
It's the challenge of three committees. Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, Deputy Commissioner. So, I, I have a lot of questions also, but I'm gonna limit it just to make sure we have enough time. Just going off of a little bit of accessibility that Chair Ung was discussing, can you share how many languages are supported on the 311 mobile app?
The 311 mobile app is in English.
Just in English, okay.
Correct.
What about 311's text messaging service?
311 text messaging is predominantly in English. We do have the ability, in some cases, to interact using Spanish, but no other languages.
Okay. What about via social media? It's, is it, can you confirm, is it predominantly Twitter? Yes. And is Twitter also, or social media, excuse me, said just in English as well?
So, yes, it's predominantly Twitter. We do also have Instagram and Facebook. It is predominantly English. We do have the ability and have done on a number of occasions to do a tweet, either a program or a promotion via Spanish.
Okay. Are there plans to expand languages supported? I mean, specifically with the mobile app, you said it's just in English. Are there plans to expand to other languages through the mobile app, through text, and through social media?
Yes. We, we're always looking to see how we can meet our customers where they are and expand that access. I mentioned in my opening statement, we are very pleased today to announce we're going to be doing a pilot to expand and use WhatsApp. And we have high hopes that that will be a process that works very well for customers, including customers who may not be, you know, utilizing 311 today, and also works within our integrated process as well. So, it, it will take some effort, but it's certainly a place we need to be, and it's a place we want to be, and we believe that will help us considerably with language access.
Absolutely. I did really appreciate that from your opening remarks. My 70-year-old grandmother will be excited about WhatsApp service requests.
And my team, my team will duly note that you endorsed that when we met, so thank you.
Is there, and I know, I know that it's a pilot, but I think in, in support of what Chair Ung's remarks and questions have been, is there equal, is there equity when we're looking at other apps that I think support other communities that are speaking other languages in English and Spanish? I know WeChat is really big in the Asian community. Is that a pilot that you all are also looking at?
We are definitely looking at, we've definitely reviewed other apps. WeChat, as you, WeGo, I think, I said it right?
I'm not the litmus. I'm just, I know that there are other applications.
But there are, there are other apps, and, and again, whether it's for automated, automated speech recognition, or a version of, I'll just use text very generically. We have run the gamut of looking at different options. We've had a researcher look at options. Our own team have looked at options. We've farmed it out to other folks. So, we are very much looking at that space. You know, if there's something that can be integrated, we're very pro on what I call test and learn. If we can trial it and see if that meets the needs of our customers, and else meets the needs of the city, let's continue, let's pursue it.
Yeah, absolutely. I just, you know, with everything, wanna make sure that we're looking at all these pilot programs equitably, so that we're not having to compare who, what communities are being left out and not. In your testimony, you also mentioned there were 2,300 customers served via social media. Can you explain what the process is for responding to the social media?
Sure. Yep. Happy to. And, and we have a, a social media team that's part of the call center staff that I mentioned earlier. So, we do a few things on social media. We, we do a push and a respond. By push, I mean, on a regular, on a daily basis, we're communicating with the public by putting out program information. It could be alternate side parking status. It can be a new program from the Department of Health. It can be a new, an update on a garbage and recycling schedule. So, a variety, you know, everything 311 handles, we could provide that on a push notification. That has worked very well since we've been in the Twitter space. A few years ago, I believe, 2018, we started to do Q and A, questions and answers on Twitter, where a user would ask a question of the account, the @NYC311 account, and our agents would field that question. And the response is usually two ways. One is it's a generic enough question that they can respond to the user, and other customers would see that response. More often, it's what we call a direct message process, where the user will ask a very specific question. Our agents will acknowledge that, ask them if they would come into the DM, as the phrase goes, and then they can work directly, just the, our agent and the customer, to exchange information. And this comes in a lot of times when a customer wants to report an infrastructure issue or an outdoor issue, and we just need a piece of information like an address. The customer may not put that when they send the original tweet, but through a quick series of back and forth in the direct message chat, then we're able to get that information, and the 311 agent then submits that for the constituent.
Fantastic. So, if a customer, if a New Yorker puts in a, or, you know, pings 311 through Twitter, a 311 agent has the ability to put that 311 request in for them?
Yes, absolutely, including giving them the confirmation number of the service request.
Fantastic. So, it seems like that pathway is, I think, a little bit more efficient, at least as far as streamlining. It seems like it's a lot quicker response. Are we emulating a similar streamlining when it comes to folks needing, needing interpretation? It seems like a lot of New Yorkers, a lot of people are falling through the cracks because they, they just give up, right? A little bit to more of Chair Ung's remarks, whereas they're waiting for an interpreter, or if they're being told to wait, and then someone comes back and tells them in English, and interpreter is on the way, a lot of folks, I mean, I, I would hang up, right? So, is a similar model of streamlining being conceived to limit that fallout, to limit the, the people, the New Yorkers who just feel like they're not being listened to and then just hang up, or whatever it is?
Thank you for the question, and I appreciate that. First, we don't want a customer to have that experience. That's not our standard. We want the customer to have the best possible experience. The scenario I described on Twitter is actually the same scenario, whether a customer calls, tweets, or texts. That, that same interaction an agent goes through is establishing a connection with the customer, acknowledging that connection, what we call probing, to ask, you know, to figure out what it is that you're asking for, because it's not on the customer to know city processes or city government. They just need to know what they want, and, and tell us what they want. Once we confirm that, then we do the, I'll call it the research. We're accessing the 311 system, the content in the 311 system, and providing that back to the customer, whether it is via text or tweet, or through an interpreter. But the process does, is fairly seamless. I, I accept and I acknowledge the reference to exceptions, where a customer may have landed with an agent, and I believe the scenario, that they went back to an English-speaking agent. The flow is, you know, sequential, in that they do not get bounced around. An agent will answer that call, stay on the line with an interpreter, and then continue through the process. If there needs to be a transfer for a reason, yes, that's a secondary. If an agent goes through the experience that was described, that's not the standard, and I would welcome, you know, examples of that, so in turn, we could drill down and understand what may have gone wrong in the process.
Does 311 have the capability to call someone back who, you know, after, who has been on hold, or who is waiting for interpretation, and then the call drops, or they hang up?
Thank you for the question. I do understand that, and right now, we do not have that technical capability.
Is that something you think would help streamline the process a little bit?
It is something we have looked at in advance of having the technology to do that. I will say, from an industry perspective, there are definitely pros to that. Unfortunately, there are cons to that as well, for the customer, not for, not for the, for the provider. So, if it's something that will work, it goes into my category of, we would definitely be in the category, in the, in the business of test and learn to see if that will help the process, especially on days when there may be, you know, unexpected high call volume, for example.
Absolutely. Thank you. Is there currently any way for someone to interact with 311 using American Sign Language?
Today, there is a process that doesn't directly involve 311, but a customer can use a video relay service to reach, to reach an American Sign Language interpreter, who then conference, who then dials 311 and initiates that conversation with the 311 agent.
So, can you just, I know you, you brief, you brief the, the process. So, someone using American Sign Language can utilize the video relay service call, correct?
Yes. That's not provided by 311, but yes, they can utilize a video relay service, and the video relay service can then conference on 311.
I understand. Okay. All right. Does 311 work with the Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities to promote digital accessibility?
Yes, I appreciate that question as well, and I can speak generally, and the prior question allowed me to give a very good example of how that works. But yes, we do partner with the Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities. My colleague, Tony, here today, with the folks at MOPD, we have a 311 employee who works at MOPD as well as part of that partnership. And the reference I made to the video relay service, it was MOPD who, several years ago, brought to our attention that they were receiving questions from constituents who were concerned that their video relay service approach was not reaching 311. We were able to look at a couple of examples and determine that customers were dialing their video relay service operator, who may have been outside of New York City, and telling them they needed to be connected to 311, and the video relay operator would dial 311 and connect them to Denver 311, as an example. So, once we determined that, we quickly figured out, okay, let's make sure we promote outside of New York City, use 212 New York, which will allow you go directly through. So, a very kind of wonkish example there, but a case that wouldn't have happened if MOPD and their constituents had not brought something to our attention and in our ability to correct that.
Absolutely. I also just wanna recognize Councilmember Charles Baron, who's joined us today. Welcome, Councilmember. Is there any way for someone to file a language access complaint with 311, other than by calling the 311 call center? For example, if they, can someone file a language access complaint on the website, on the app, via text, social media, and what does that process look like?
We can definitely file one via calling 311. I believe we can, but I'm gonna hesitate because I'm not sure of the full range of what you just said. If, if that's okay, I'd like to look into that. I'm sure I have folks right now hearing that question and looking to provide that answer, but I'd like to confirm that before I, I say yes or no on that. And I can get right back to you on that.
Okay. And next, I wanna ask about the, the vendor, the, the language, Language Line that you all utilize. You said it's, you know, nationally the top vendor for interpretation services. How long has, has Language Line been the interpreter since 2003? The vendor, excuse me, since 2003?
The Language Line did not, was not there in 2003. The city used a different vendor at that time. Language Line came on board in 2006.
2006, okay.
And has been our, our primary vendor ever since.
Okay. And then, could you specify the services that they're required to provide?
Sure. They do provide, under our contract, the 311 contract, interpretation and translation services. Interpretation for voice, translation for written document or text. Obviously, our business is primarily the interpretation on voice. As part of that, they have, we have a contract with them, requires them to answer calls within X seconds. I mentioned earlier, one of the standards for, for languages is 30 seconds or less. As part of that, we have performance metrics. If, for example, Language Line interpreter does not pick up within a preset service level agreement target, then that call is considered a failed call, technically, even though the call will continue, and the customer can still speak to the interpreter and 311 agent. But from a contract perspective, we consider that a failed call, and Language Line needs to credit the city for not achieving that service level objective.
Fantastic. I don't know if you, if I missed it, because the acoustics in, in here are a little tough, but my question is about quality control, and I can only speak to Spanish language, for example. I'm curious to know what the quality control process is with Language Line regarding cultural competency in Spanish, and I'm sure, I think the same is for other languages. But what, what does that quality control look like in those, in those scenarios?
Great. Thank you for the question, and I'm gonna get a little closer and see if that helps with the acoustics.
It's not you.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, on a quality control basis, at a very high level, I'll speak to it broadly, because we apply a lot of the same measures across all services, all customer interactions, irrespective of language. And we have a dedicated quality assurance team. They do call listening in two specific ways. One is to evaluate the cus, I'm sorry, evaluate the agent, and whether they're following the right protocol, how they're handling the call, et cetera. And then, they also evaluate for what I call the content. Is, is the information we're providing, does it make sense? Does it work for the customer? One of the things we work hard on, we have an excellent content management team, is keeping language in what we call the plain language standard. That serves customers of all languages, whether you're, whether it's an English-speaking customer, or if it's someone who relies on an interpreter. If the original content is in plain language standards, it makes the interpretation much clearer, much simpler. So, one of the things our quality assurance, our quality control looks at is just that. We also utilize interactions with Language Line. While we officially only speak English and Spanish in the call center, we can work with Language Line to have an assessment of their translators. Are they translating correctly? You know, do they have a level of proficiency that's necessary? So, that is something that's available to us through our Language Line arrangement.
Thank you. I, I have one more question before I pass it over to Councilmember Aviles. You mentioned that Language Line is also in contract to provide interpretation and translation through text. So, I'm wondering what, what's taking so long to get that language capability through the mobile app, through text, just to expand the diversity of languages being offered through these other areas? Because they can these other areas? Because they can, you know, based on your report, calls obviously are still profoundly the majority of the way that you all receive service requests, but we also see that through the mobile app and through text and through Twitter, those are also on the incline. So I'm curious what, how that contract will be reworked, or what is the inefficiency, or what is the issue that's preventing other languages to be offered through these services?
Great. Thank you for the question. The current contract does translation of languages. It's not real time. The contract arrangement is-
It's not real time?
I'm sorry. It's not real time. It's not a real-time text process. We would submit a document, for example, and Language Line would translate that document and provide it back to us in hours or days, depending on the SLA. So it's not a real time, as an example, when you have an interpreter on a phone call. So our translation document, I'm sorry, our contract, as it speaks to translating documents, is, has a SLA that is not real time. That's the biggest limitation of incorporating that, let's say, in a text arrangement.
Sure. Does that require a separate kind of a contract or a separate kind of agreement? Again, I just think it's super vital that we're offering this, especially if we're looking at, if you are looking at different pilots through messaging. I'm curious kind of where they, as a vendor, fold into that bigger goal of providing more languages through text, through the website, in real time.
Sure. I follow that and understand. Yeah, it would definitely be a service that we don't currently have through that contract, so it would be a greater scope. We'd have to take a look at that.
Thank you. I'll pass it on to Councilmember Aviles. Thank you so much, Deputy Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, have some water. I'd like to know, one thing I didn't hear in your statement was anything about public housing residents. How does 3-1-1 track the scale and scope of public housing resident calls?
Sure. Thank you for that question, and I can speak to the overall process, and I think that'll answer some of the specific questions. I'll speak at a general level to start. If a customer contacts 3-1-1 and looking for what they need, we serve that customer, whatever they described. I mentioned, we probe, we try to understand their question, and then we use our knowledge management system so the agent can determine what the next step is. If a customer has a specific complaint about a facility, a property, a building, and that is under the New York City Housing Authority, the 3-1-1 protocol is to transfer that customer to the New York City Housing Authority Call Center. We can provide customers some basic information on New York City Housing Authority policies and programs, but for a complaint or a request, I should say, it's a transfer. The way we track that is through that very process. We can say how many customers contacted us, and in turn, how many of those customers, you know, needed something that had to be referred to the New York City Housing Authority. That's for, within the, I'll call it, within the facility, within the structure. If it's a complaint or a request for something that is outside of a building, not related to a building, outside on the street, for example, a noise complaint, 3-1-1 will process that noise complaint as we would any other noise complaint. And we do track that. I think I may have said that, but to answer your second part of your question, we do track how many times 3-1-1 will handle a question and then transfer that to the NICA CCC.
So how, so as you heard in my earlier testimony, NICA has, you know, both its traditional Section 9 housing and housing that is transferred into Section 8 under private management. We have heard countless stories about residents calling 3-1-1 and being caught in this circle of getting referred back to NICA. How does 3-1-1 maintain an updated registry of properties and ensure that they are providing the correct information to callers?
Thank you for the question, and I'll begin by saying I can appreciate, you know, any loop that would cause a problem for a customer. That's, you know, again, not a customer service standard, and we do strive to achieve all customer service standards. We do have a process to prevent that. 3-1-1 works with NICA and with Housing Preservation Development. We do get an updated file of properties when they do move from one state to another state, and then that file then gets incorporated into our system. So when a customer provides the address, the system, as opposed to the agent, will know whether this is, you know, a property for NICA or no longer, or non-NICA property, if you will. So there is a process, and the file does get provided to 3-1-1 and then is updated.
And how often are you updating?
That I don't know. I can find out how many updates we've done, but off the top of my head, I don't know how often that happens. I do believe when we get a file, it's a, you know, it's a full file. It's not incrementally. It's not, you know, unit by unit. It's a full file of properties.
Great. We'd love to, I think from resident feedback we've received, it doesn't seem like updates are happening nearly as frequently as they need to be. So it would be great to understand more clearly what the updating protocol is, and also just clearly around how staff are informed around the 3-1-1 NICA protocols, the levels of engagement. It would be good to see what that looks like.
Okay. Great. I'd be happy to follow up, and in particular, if there are some examples that really helps us zero in on, you know, what may be, you know, a one-off or a glitch or a problem, and we can address them that way.
And in terms of, you mentioned you do keep analytics on the number of calls that are referred to NICA. Can you give us a sense of how many calls you're receiving annually?
Yes. For, I can do half of that, six months. I have a data point for January through June, through, at least this week. We receive and transfer about 100 calls per day on average to the NICA CCC.
And would you say, thank you for the updated information, would you say that trend is increasing about what you regularly see from other years?
We took a look at that period of time compared to last year, but also to 2019, to get all the pandemic churn out of the way, and it's within plus or minus 10% year over year.
Great. The other aspect we've heard many challenges with is when residents are calling around HPD. We've heard that 3-1-1 is not taking resident complaints related to HPD. Is this in the protocol, or what is the confusion or disconnect that is happening?
Thank you for the question. I'm not sure of what confusion may exist. I can speak to our process on HPD, and-
Please do.
I can also offer that of our top five service request types annually, two are for HPD, for taking heat and hot water complaints and for taking what we call apartment maintenance complaints. So we have a very robust accounting of HPD complaints, as well as a very robust process. But speaking to the original point, HPD is absolutely part of the 3-1-1 intake and referral process. If a customer has a complaint, aforementioned heat or hot water complaint, something in their apartment, any particular problem in their apartment, they go through the process where we will take that complaint, submit it to HPD, customer gets a confirmation number. The customer, depending on the complaint type, the customer can remain anonymous and make a complaint, for example, for an apartment or an entire building. For a more specific complaint, they provide contact information that is sent over to HPD. We get a confirmation number. We give that to the customer. HPD gets that same confirmation number, and then HPD has a service level agreement, the amount of time they need to close that out. I'm not aware of any barriers or prior examples where we've not been able to submit to HPD. As I mentioned, based on the volume, you know, HPD is in the, kind of in the bread and butter of what 3-1-1 does.
So if a NICA resident tells the call-in center, I'm a NICA resident, and obviously the protocol is telling them to transfer to the call center, but insists on putting forward a complaint for it to HPD, does the call-in center take those calls, or do they continue to direct residents to NICA's call-in center?
Thank you. I appreciate the distinction there. There's a couple of options there. We can't take a complaint similar to an HPD apartment maintenance complaint if it's not an HPD property, so that would not be a possibility. However, the customer can do what we call an agency complaint. They can voice their opinion, their complaint, their position, and that's an option that every customer would have.
So in the case of no heat or hot water, which is an HPD issue, given that they're public housing residents, you would still not take that complaint? You would direct them to NICA?
If it is a NICA property, if the customer expresses it as a NICA property, then yes, we would follow the protocol and get it to the agency that is best suited to serve that customer at that point in time.
So you don't receive any HPD complaints for NICA residents on NICA property?
I'm processing that. HPD complaints for NICA. We may receive questions, but we don't have the ability-
You don't process any HPD-related complaints made by public housing residents? You redirect them to NICA's call-in center?
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Yes, we would redirect them.
So as you're aware, we, there was legislation passed to open up 3-1-1 to NICA residents. Can you tell me how you track improvements on that, and if in fact, you're receiving more calls from NICA residents?
Yes. Thank you for that question. This is one that I believe was implemented at the end of last year and went into effect, I believe, March 7th, or about March 7th. That law basically codified the existing process of 3-1-1 transferring or referring or transferring a customer to NICA's call center. Since that period of time, we did take a look at the call volume. It's in line with what I mentioned before, between June and January of this year. This year versus last year, if I recall correctly, was about a 9% decrease in total volume, but in the scheme of, you know, overall size, it wasn't a material swing one way or the other. So we have looked at that since that went into effect.
Okay. I think, I actually have questions for our NICA colleagues, but I don't know if we should, for a NICA colleague, so. This is a challenge with joint committees. We don't know exactly what the protocol is. Can I ask NICA colleagues? Huh? Oh, okay. I can do what I want. That's incredible. Okay. I'd love to shift the conversation to our NICA colleagues and understand a little bit better around the protocol and communication that it has with the 3-1-1 center. I'd love to understand a little bit on what the engagement is and how NICA is managing the inflow.
Thank you, Councilmember. As Deputy Commissioner mentioned, the 3-1-1 calls for NICA do get routed back to NICA's call center for follow-up and action. I want to clarify a few points, first of all, about our customer contact center and the service it provides. We are providing the same service, and that, and NICA residents, I should say, have the same access to 3-1-1 and get the same service as any other resident. When any other resident in New York City has a problem with their landlord, the first place they call is their landlord. If they have a stoppage in their toilet or something that's not working, they call their landlord. If the landlord is not responding, that is when they escalate to a 3-1-1 complaint and ask for HPD to come out. So the first stop for a NICA resident should be their landlord, which is NICA, and that is happening through the CCC. The value that the CCC provides as well, above and beyond 3-1-1, is that we can directly schedule those appointments. So when a resident calls the CCC, they have access to the schedule of their property management office and their availability of their maintenance workers. So they are able to directly schedule their maintenance worker to come out. They can say 8:00 to noon on Wednesday, 1:00 to 4:00 on Thursday, and make that happen. That is information that our CCC has in coordination with our property management.
Can I just mention one thing?
Yes.
Often when residents are calling 3-1-1, it is after they've exhausted employing with their landlord or any other city agency, for that matter. This is well after that fact.
Yes. So I wanted to just clarify, the steps in the process are the same for both NICA residents and regular, you know, any other resident in the city of New York. So when NICA residents feel like they're not getting a response, I understand that they want someplace else to go, and 3-1-1 sends them back to us. However, there are other avenues as well for NICA residents to escalate their complaints. First of all, we have a compliance department that is an internal oversight, and they reach out to the compliance department very often to escalate those complaints if not in action. In addition, since 2019, when we signed the HUD agreement, we are under a whole new enforcement regime, and we have partners at the federal level that are also involved in that accountability structure. So there are places for NICA residents to go. In addition, NICA residents are able to file House and Court actions against NICA, and they often do. The key is, is that the CCC is able to provide that direct level of service as far as scheduling, and as part of our new programs that we've been rolling out, we are also adding more areas for NICA residents to call to schedule service. So as part of our work order reform, now when they need a skilled trades appointment, they are calling our neighborhood planners in order to directly schedule that. So we are taking steps to improve that direct access for our residents to schedule repair needs.
Can we just take a quick step back, because we're going to get to work order reform? We love that topic. Can you just tell us some basic information around the call-in center? Can you give us a sense of how many calls per year NICA receives to the call-in center? How many employees it has, its funding, its language capability?
Yes. And so I will start, but I may also call in one of my colleagues to go, to add in. So in 2021, for calendar year 2021, we had a total for maintenance calls specifically of 1.8 million calls. We averaged about 155 calls per month for '21, 155,000, sorry, calls per month, and those are volume of maintenance calls specifically, since I-
I'm sorry. Say that one more time?
For maintenance repair request calls, on average, for the calendar year 2021, it was just over 155,000 calls a month.
A month?
A month. 1.87 million calls per year for 2021, for just the maintenance option.
And what is the total calls that the center has received?
Do we have the total calls?
Before you begin, I'll just give you the affirmation. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, before these committees, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you. And please state your name for the record.
I'm Carrie G. I'm the Executive Vice President and Chief Administrative Officer of the New York City Housing Authority. So, and this customer contact center reports to administration. So the total number of calls, which is the maintenance calls as well as Section 8 and applications in Tennessee administration for 2021 was about 2, almost 2.8 million.
And can you tell us the budget of the call center, the number of staff?
So we currently have 117 staff in the Customer Contact Center Department. That includes not only the call center, but also our two walk-in centers. There's one in the Bronx and one in Brooklyn. There are 76 permanent staff or full-time staff in the call center. This does not account for the temporary employees that we hire in the call center, which we find necessary to adjust with seasonality.
Do you employ any NICA residents in the call center?
Yes, we do.
How many residents do you employ?
We have about 10% are residents. Again, that's just with the full-time NICA-employed staff. That does not include the temporary staff.
So of the 76 full-time staff members, 10% of that are NICA residents?
Of the 117 full-time-
Of the 117.
In the department. Correct. In the department, correct.
Do you think the agency can do better with employing NICA residents?
I think the agency tries very hard to employ residents. The job is very difficult and very stressful, so we do outreach to residents. The full-time position, as you know, is civil service competitive, so in order to hire someone into a full-time position, when there is an active civil service list, we have to, we have to adhere to that. So we do encourage residents as well as the temporary employees who come to take the civil service exam when offered, and hopefully they pass and are on a place on the list that we can reach them.
Do you provide any particular programming to support residents to, to pathways into employment with the call-in center?
Specifically with the call-in center, I'm not aware of any training for that.
Got it. In terms of language accessibility, can you describe what that looks like?
So we also, we have bilingual Spanish call center representatives who are able to handle calls directly in Spanish and English. We also have a vendor who we use for the other languages that we may need in order to service our residents.
Who is the vendor and what's the scale of the contract?
The vendor is Language Service Associates. It's over 100 languages, is that what you're, you mean? How many languages?
No, I think similarly to our, our Do-It-Tic colleagues. It's a question around performance indication, performance indicators, and also specifically what the scope and scale of services that are provided.
So, so Language Services Associates was a contract that we entered into in 2021. We had a different vendor prior to that. We have, so between February 2021, when the contract started, through June of 2022, there were 232,000, almost 233,000 calls that Language Services Associates assisted the call center with.
Does the call center also do translation, written translation, or is it just verbal?
No, it's verbal. It's, it's, it becomes a three-party call, similar to what was described for 311.
And what is the quality control process?
Similar to 311, we have supervisors who are listening into the calls as well. Calls are recorded, so we are able to play back if there are issues that are raised specifically about a caller, so that we could do the research on that. And we are able to train and performance manage call takers based on the supervisors listening into the calls.
I realize I can go on forever, and my colleagues are patiently awaiting for their questions, so I will, I will circle back for questions. But I was curious about how, what is the call time wait and response mechanisms of the call center?
So the call time, you mean the average speed of answer? Okay, so the average speed of answer in 2022 through, from January through June, has been on the maintenance side about 12 minutes and 1 second. The average handle time has been 5 minutes 10 seconds.
Wow. Okay, I think, I, yeah, my brain is like processing. I think I would love to turn it over and open it up for our colleagues.
I'm sorry, no, no.
Okay.
Yes, 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 no.
Yes, Councilmember Holden?
I'm sorry, I misspoke. That was all calls, that wasn't on the maintenance side. On the maintenance side, the average speed of answer has been in 2022, from January through June, 44 seconds, and the handle time has been 3 minutes 32 seconds. I'm sorry, the, the time to answer and handle calls for all of the call center is higher when you add in the Section 8 and Application Tennessee Administration, because those calls take longer to handle. The questions are more in-depth.
Could you provide the council with a description of, of the quality control measures and where, how performance is doing across whatever dimensions you're tracking at this time? Great, and with that, I'd love to pass it over to Councilmember Holden.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I love the 311 app, and I'm going to make suggestions, because I use it every day multiple times. It does have some shortcomings, which I will go over. But first, I want to do a follow-up. As former Chair of Technology, in October of 2021 hearing, former Do-It Commissioner Jesse Tisch stated that a new digital 311 phone system replacing the current analog system is going live in the first or second quarter of next year, meaning this year. And that pressing zero when you were calling 311, you'd be directed to a live operator may be an option, because every one of us who's called 311 sometimes, and during the pandemic, I think it was like a five-minute message of all the, you know, services you were, you were going to get or related to COVID, but you would have to sit through. If you weren't interested in, in that, you have to sit through messages. Can we press zero and get a live operator now?
Thank you, Chair. Councilmember Holden, and I do recall the hearing last year, but to answer your specific question, currently, no. We do go through the process. It is something with a technology advancement, a technology enhancement that'd be coming later this year, we may be able to do.
Also, do you plan on designating a separate category for film shoot-related complaints? Because we can't do that on the app, and we can't do it, you know, I think on the website either.
Thank you, I do understand the question. I'm not sure, we'd have to work with our partners at the property agency, which I believe is-
Because we could put in legislation, you know, I mean, we'd like you to, to try it, because it's not, it's not a difficult measure. Because I have a number of complaints on, of the app. Let me just go over a couple, and I could put that in a letter too, to you. But, for instance, you have, and I mentioned this to the previous commissioner, you have on, because I do a lot of parking violation complaints, and you have a pulldown, describe parking violation. There's only eight parking violations, and, and some are missing, and I know you can put, put that under posted rules, for instance, like parking at a bus stop. There's no pulldown for that, and that's quite common. Or, you know, or parking in a, in a bus lane. I guess that would be under posted rules, but we are getting other complaints. So I think we, we have so much space under the pulldown menu here that we could limit this, you know, the complications by just adding more, you know, more parking problems or, you know, situations that we, and it's very easy to do. And we did get, by the way, I did mention to the previous commissioner that we had no blocking crosswalk, which is a quite, you know, all you have to do is walk outside, you'll see it. So we got that added, but it seemed like only one a year that we're getting. We need to, we need to really get to the, to the, really the, the major complaints. For instance, under, like I have a lot of commercial vehicles parked in my, my district, but it's more than just overnight. So you just have commercial overnight, but there is a parking violation that commercial vehicles do. They're only allowed in residential areas to park for three hours. That should be a submenu under commercial vehicles, because that's quite common. In my district, we have a lot of people parking their vehicles the whole day, and then they go to, they go to work at night. So 311 is very, very good. Like I said, my district already has, my one precinct, 20,000 complaints this year to date, and we, we urge our members, our constituents to call, but there are improvements that I'd like to see, and I will talk to you, maybe we can talk at one point, because I use, like I said, I'm a habitual user for 311, but I won't use, I won't call, because it, I have to listen to a lot of messages, and I don't, you know, I don't have time for that. So the app is great, but it needs to be updated, and, but I thank you for that. If you could, if you have any changes coming, please let us know, because it is important that we get a, a working app. And on my legislation, I think we could get to four steps if we make some, you know, improvements, but thank you so much. Thank you, Chairs.
I'd just like to acknowledge, thank you, Councilmember Holden, and I will say you're a power user as opposed to a habitual user, and we thank you, because the feedback is very, very much appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. I also acknowledge that Councilmember Brewer has joined us, and I believe now Councilmember Kagan has a couple of questions.
Thank you so much. So my first question is to 311. So I called about sanitation conditions on 86th Street in Bensonhurst to complain, because I was told all the time that we don't have enough records of complaints, so I decided to try myself. 35 minutes phone call, 35 minutes. It was about terrible sanitation conditions on 86th Street in Bensonhurst. So it's not always the experience, I had a lot of good experiences, but my point is like, what kind of training do you provide to your workers? If like, taking a call complaint, simple complaint about sanitation condition on one block in Bensonhurst takes 35 minutes. Not everybody has so much time and patience.
Thank you for the example and the personal experience, I appreciate that. Without knowing, you know, any more of the details, I will agree, that's too long a period of time. We do focus for the customer's perspective, but also for the efficiency of the operation, to have a most, you know, the most streamlined call process. Sometimes customers need to take a little longer, which we accommodate that, but we, you know, would need to be, we want to be and need to be in a mode that's streamlined. So I'd be interested in finding out a little bit more about the details of your experience. One of the things we do, I mentioned earlier, we have a very robust quality assurance and quality control process. We can listen to calls, we can go back and, you know, hear what happened if there needs to be, you know, a streamlining of the process. We're happy to do that. So I appreciate both versions of your example, good examples as well as, you know, examples that didn't meet the standard.
I have a record of this call, but besides that, I received, after that, I received that everything is resolved, everything is okay. For the record, nothing was resolved. I brought sanitation commissioner later on, and now it's much better. But my point is like, nothing was resolved, but the ticket was closed.
So, I'm sorry, if I can clarify, so you submitted it, said it was resolved, but nothing had been resolved?
I received text message that your, your complaint, everything is resolved, everything is okay, nothing was done, zero.
I'm sorry about that situation.
My second question is about NICA. So can I talk about NICA? So people are calling me, NICA residents, that they're filing the complaint. First of all, they have problem to get ticket number to begin with. They're not going to get ticket if they're like, oh, like we don't have ticket for you, like different problem, call management, call, don't call us. That's the first problem. Second, I do not know how is it even possible the ticket is closed without resolving anything, and then person has to call again and again about the same issue to get a new ticket, a new ticket, a new ticket. Is it any kind of responsibility of anybody? Anybody can call management and, what are you doing there? Why people calling same person about same problem for like week, and you giving them new tickets and closing them without doing anything? Sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I, I truly share in your frustration on that, on that situation. The instance of closed, of closed work tickets is something we are aware of and something we have started to look into. Again, we absolutely share that frustration. No ticket should be closed without communication to the resident as to why it's being closed, and that is something we are working on now to facilitate. So for example, we're working on two specific changes to that exact issue. The first is, right now, when you call the CCC for any type of complaint or issue, you don't get any documentation of that call. So it's incumbent upon the resident to make sure they have a pen and paper handy, write down that work ticket number, and make sure they never lose that paper, because otherwise they've lost that ticket number. And so what we're working, number one, to do is to create an email document of that communication, so that once you've had that call with the CCC, the resident will get an email with the service request number, the ticket number, and the summary of the conversation, whether something was scheduled or whatever type of complaint was taken. So that's something we're looking to put in place this calendar year. Second, we, we actually conducted a closed work ticket study of tickets that were closed with no work done, and we are looking into the situations around that. One of the biggest resolutions of that was, was, or recommendations rather, from that study, was to create this communication with residents, so that we were clarifying when and why tickets were closed. So that is absolutely something we're working on. If you find instances, and when you hear of instances of that, I, I encourage you to bring that to intergovernmental affairs, so we can follow up on it. We have been using some of those case studies from other resident leaders and council members in order to inform our changes that we're trying to make. So really sympathize with that situation, we're aware of it, and we're trying to fix it.
Sometimes I'm sending emails to intergovernmental relations representatives with four tickets from the same resident about the same issues within one week. So that shows me that nobody cares.
And I will say to your, to your accountability point, there are a lot of people that care, and that is something we are trying to, to improve across NICA, is our commitment to service for our residents. And I also wanted to just take a moment to comment on, on your accountability points, because you are right, all the capital in the world does not come along with accountability. But in 2020, we issued our transformation plan. I highly encourage you to take a look at it, it's on our website. It is part of the 2019 HUD agreement, where we were required to create a new organizational plan, and the key to that organizational plan is improving accountability. And many steps and initiatives are part of that plan, that when rolled out and fully implemented, we hope will make those improvements, and that our residents will be able to see it, and you will be able to see it. It will take some time, but that is what we're working on. So we, we share those values with you, and I hope that you will work with us to, to get there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be fast. I do have a question regarding NICA. So like my colleague, Councilmember Aviles, mentioned that oftentimes, NICA tenants will call 311, and actually, I want to share anecdotally that I'm sure they call our offices after CCC and then before 311. So it's, 311 is probably like Plan B, Plan C, because oftentimes they're at their wits' end. Is there a process for NICA tenants to complain about their CCC experience to 311 without being punted back to NICA? Is there a mechanism where tenants who are raising, putting in service requests, I know you don't like complaints, service requests, about their experience, about their customer experience, specifically about the call center? Is there a mechanism that exists for 311 to record that? To, you know, I, I don't know what the backend looks like, but I'm curious what that looks like.
Yes, and I'll hand it off to 311, but correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, but when, when 311 takes a NICA complaint, they take the information, and that information is passed over to NICA. It's not necessarily just passed to the CCC, it's, it's passed over to NICA Customer Operations, and they then hand that complaint off to the relevant NICA unit. So if it's about a maintenance repair or service request, it would most likely go to CCC in order to get, to be followed up on as a maintenance request. If it's about service from the CCC, then that would go to my, my colleague Carrie Ju in the Administration Department to be reviewed as part of a complaint about the CCC experience. In addition, we do have CCC surveys that go out after calls, where people can, can document the service that they, they felt they had during the call.
Okay, so just to confirm, there's nothing- Do you know, there's no like, so it just, it goes right back to NICA, even if the complaint is about that customer experience, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And I will wrap up, but I have, my questions are for Deputy Commissioner, just regarding the remarks you made on Intro 240 specifically. I know in your remarks, you said that there is no real, I guess, like interest, because the role of 311 is not necessarily to follow council legislation each time this happens. So what is the current process of adding a new service request category to 311?
Okay, thank you. There's a couple of different- Okay, thank you. There's a couple of different paths. They can come in from legislation, it could be an agency initiative, a new program, mayoral introduction. There is a very structured process, a very encompassing process, because it does depend on a lot of things connecting correctly, if you will. So the best way is, we have an intake process. The OTI organization would have an intake process. An agency brings forth a proposal, or a scope of what they want to be able to do, and, or it may come in through legislation, as I mentioned before. That comes into the intake process, where it'll go through a design assessment approach. Do we have something that exists already? Is there something we can modify? You know, what's the scope? If you think of a standard service request form, that shows the what, the where, the when, and even the who, those are some of the elements. We call them fields, values, et cetera. We have to make sure, you know, do we have something? Can we build that out? Are there dependencies? Is there an if-then situation? So all of that gets worked by a team, I won't say a team, a number of people on a team, loosely call it, you know, analyst, trying to figure out what happens. Then you can build a timeline, then you can determine how long it would take to deploy, you know. There are some cases, there would need to be, you know, post-deployment support, that is training. So there's a whole bunch of different paths. It really would depend on, is this a tweak to an existing service request, or is this a whole new tipper, a whole new service request type that we'd have to implement, build and implement?
And so, just a little bit to Councilmember Holden's question regarding categories that, including like illegal dumping, what are the factors that you, the 311 would need to be reflected there to include it as a new service request?
The primary step is the responsive agency, right? They're the ones who are actually going to fulfill on the request. So they would need to outline what are their requirements, what can they take, what level of detail can they take. Then that works with 311 to handle on the intake side.
So 311 determines, based on their conversations with the agency, if they are in fact able to respond, then they'll add it as a service request?
Basically, yes, yeah. The agency comes forth, and they say, this is what, what's required, or what's needed. Does that work? Does that fit into our model? Can we, can we put those two together? But it does start with the agency saying, this is the way we want to handle this request.
But, but NICA does not, I don't think that NICA does that response time, as like, like, do you understand, I'm just curious, I don't think NICA does that in an efficient way for responding to service requests. Is that part of the reason that the 311 calls go, just, they get, they go right back to NICA for NICA tenants?
No, I would say, from our perspective, you know, the protocol we follow is to refer there. I believe that's because the NICA system is integrated with its fulfillment system. But again, I defer to my colleagues at NICA, if it's a deeper NICA question.
I think they've answered it. Okay, so I would love to work with my colleagues on the illegal dumping piece with DSNY. Obviously, I think that that's a really, that's a really huge piece in a lot of our, for a lot of our communities. Okay, I think that's it. That's it for my questions, Councilmember. Did you have?
I know you had questions. A quick follow-up, just to make sure I understood properly. Did you just mention that 311's, I guess, interface or mechanism integrates with NICA's call-in center? Do those systems, are they able to talk to each other?
I apologize for any confusion. No, they're not able to talk.
They do not?
They do not.
I, I just, I, yeah, I'm not surprised, okay. In terms of, okay, actually, let me hand it back to you, because I have a bunch of other questions.
I'm, I'm gonna give NICA a break here, no NICA questions. Just a couple more 311 questions. This is actually not language access related, but is there any way for 311 to internally transfer complaints? So I'll just give you an example. I have calls from, you know, noise complaints that's in my district, which automatically transfers to 109, because that's the police precinct in my district. But the noise is not actually coming from this, my district, it's actually coming from another district. So then what happens is 109 transferred that call to another police precinct, and then 109 automatically closes out. So in there, you know, and when the 311 complaint, you know, my constituent is seeing, wow, that call got closed out in one second, or like five minutes, let's put it that way. They have no feeling of, I actually had my, you know, someone responded to my complaint. So is there any way to, I guess, from 311 call center, to transfer that internally?
I tracked the question. When you say internally, you mean to a different precinct?
Yes.
I thought, so the service request process, whether you call in, or whether a customer submits with no agent involved, you know, self-serve, follows the same process, and the location drives, the location of the incident drives the distribution to the precinct. There's no human intervention that could, in that process, to divert it or to reroute it?
I see. Thank you. So my other two questions is more language access related. Back to the question of, I asked earlier about bilingual speakers, as you said, there's only Spanish bilingual speakers. Has there been efforts? Has, is there regulations? What's the reason of not having other than Spanish, more bilingual speakers as 311 operators?
Thank you for that. I don't believe there's been any regulation, you know, encouraging or discouraging that from happening. In large part, it's a model that's followed by other call center industries. It's efficient and more real-time responsive to be able to rely on vendor to do the translations, because that's their, that's their core competency, that's their size and scope, whereas it's not something that an operation of our size would have.
So you're saying it's more efficient to use Language Line than to think about hiring bilingual speakers?
What we look at is, the process is a 24/7 process, and that quickly gets into a lot of coverage. You can have an on-demand resource that you're paying for, you know, on a transactional basis, such as Language Line, for when those, when that demand comes up. It's more difficult to staff that, whether you're a government call center or a private sector call center, on a, on a pure staffing basis, if you will.
So based on that, there is no, there's no, there's no desire on 311's part to hire bilingual speakers? You rather, you know, rely on Language Line?
There's no resistance to hire bilingual speakers. In order to make the process work, the volume and the frequency and what we call the arrival pattern of calls makes relying on an in-place vendor much, much more efficient.
I see. Thank you. I would still like the follow-up to the, how, the Spanish bilingual speakers.
Yes, I got a note on that, and we will get that to you.
Great, thank you. And then one last question I do have, is about the customer satisfaction. I noticed on your report, you did say that there's, you guys rank pretty high over the past decade. So I also noticed in my committee report, on that customer satisfaction survey, it's 94.6% of the responses were received from English speakers. The rest are not. So there's actually, that customer service survey is actually a high amount of English speakers that's coming back. Is there any efforts about targeting popular, you know, populations with English, limited English proficiency? Just, you know, I'm asking you this question, see what type of effort is there to reach out to the population with limited English proficiency, to see how they are, how, you know, how they are, how they are dealing with 311, and any sort of feedback they, you know, they have for 311?
Great, thank you. I do appreciate that question, and the broader topic of the in-language, or the language survey, as we call it, which just was introduced last year, and you, I believe you all have received the report today. So we're very interested in getting more feedback from non-English speaking customers. Our survey tools over the years for English-speaking customers, and to an extent, Spanish-speaking customers, have been incredibly valuable, both for improvements, but also to acknowledge work that's being done. When we launched the in-language survey last year, in the 10 citywide designated languages, that's our goal, is to start getting more feedback from customers we may not hear, because of the language preference. So the start is small. There's several, several languages that have given some responses, several that have not. We do conduct the survey on a regular basis. We try to find as many ways as possible, but we're really interested in reaching more customers who speak languages other than English, and understanding how they feel about 311.
No, I appreciate the intent. You don't have the answer right now, but I think my question goes to, beyond intent, what are the efforts that's actually being done to reach populations of English limited proficiency? And it's something I recognize, even if I be able, better like, able to answer now, but something to definitely think about, about actually how to target that.
Thank you.
We understand that DOIT received a $45 million, I guess, allocation for hardware, software, professional services necessary to complete the first phase of the 311 telecom system modernization. Can you explain what is involved in Phase 1? Also, I'd like to hear what contracts are represented within this massive total, specifically also, do we know what percentage are granted to MWBEs and/or local vendors? And also, would like to hear a little bit more about how many phases will there be, and what are they?
Okay, thank you for the question. I am familiar with the item you mentioned, but I don't have a level of detail, or, or, you know, a deep understanding of some of those questions. So I would have to take that back to my colleagues within OTI, and be able to get back to you that way.
Okay, great. We await the response. In terms of, I guess, back to NICA requests, can you tell us what the level of specificity that 311 collects in terms of data that is then redirected to NICA?
Yes, I can answer that. We do not collect any location or customer information. It's, it's a tracking that a request was made, or a transfer was made.
Got it. In terms of, we know that 311 triggers, can trigger DOHMH for private residents to hold landlords accountable for complaints. Is there a similar system of accountability for NICA residents?
I, I tracked with the question, and I'm thinking, I'm not sure. It would definitely be something I'd have to look into, and get back to my team, and get a better understanding on that.
Does NICA ever refer residents to DOHMH?
I'm not sure about that either, and I don't want to misspeak, so we'll get back to you on that as well.
Great. I guess, moving on to the work orders and accountability. We know in 2015, the New York State Comptroller audited NICA's maintenance and repair practices. We know there is a very large backlog. What is the current backlog of work orders, and can you break that down by work type?
Yes, let me see what I have here. So I know that our, our work order backlog right now is over 600,000. It's actually over 633,000 open work orders, including just over 25,000 work orders for maintenance complaints, and 405,000 for skilled trade. And then there's another 200,000 that are assigned to vendors.
See that last one again, I'm sorry.
Just over 200,000 signed with vendors.
What does that mean?
It means that we, we are using a vendor to complete that work order. So it's usually a skilled trade, but to complement our skilled trades, we also assign vendors to do so.
Got it. I got it. Thank you. Can you break down any complaints that are received by PAC developments? Residents who are in PAC developments versus NICA?
So, so once a development converts through the PACD Rad Program, those maintenance complaints go to their landlord. So we are not tracking that. However, we do stay in communication with our PAC partners, and if there are, if a resident brings a problem to our attention, we do bring that to our PAC partners' attention as well, through our asset management department.
So I guess, in that regard, it's the PAC compliance unit? Do they keep track and report on complaints received and their status?
I don't believe they are keeping track. Again, those, those residents can now bring those complaints directly to, to their landlord to resolve. They obviously now can also call 311 to have HPD follow up, if they believe there's a code violation in place.
Right. Which leads to the spiral of hell, when 311 hears public housing, because folks will refer to themselves as still living in public housing under PAC program, and they are not allowed to do HPD. They're sent back to a management company that they're having problems with. In terms of, what are the main roadblocks to completing the work orders in a timely manner? And how is NICA keeping residents informed when there's a delay in fulfilling their repair requests?
Thank you. So, the biggest issue with our work order backlog is, is obviously our, our capital need. We have, as it's been well told, a $40 billion capital gap, and that is reflected in our work orders. I also want to clarify that the volume of work orders is something we, you know, we don't discourage. We want our residents to call in their deficiencies. We want to understand what's going in the properties. It also helps us address conditions in a different way. So for example, for heat and hot water complaints, it's very important that we know what's going on, and that we're getting every resident to call, so that we can quickly understand, is this something that's happening on a specific line? Is it the whole building? Is it the whole development? That kind of data is helpful in, in helping us figure out our response, and targeting our response to that condition. So the volume isn't necessarily, you know, always a bad thing, but we do understand we have a significant volume. It's due to our capital backlog. It's due to, you know, the, the fact that our buildings are so old, and we could go in there today and fix a pipe, and tomorrow, a pipe may burst somewhere else. So we are trying to do our best to improve our operations, to address how we, how we respond to those work orders, but without significant capital, it will be very hard for us to completely reduce that backlog.
Right, I understand there's a, I'm not gonna call the plan its appropriate name, but you're, NICA's rolling out a work order reform, reform plan?
Yes, our work order reform plan is designed to more quickly address those skilled trades needs. So again, I can't guarantee the pipe won't burst again, but what I'm trying to guarantee is that we will show up when we say we're gonna show up, and that we're gonna do our best to fix the repair at that time. So work order reform includes an investment of over 450 new staff across all the skilled trades, and decentralizing the skilled trades to the property, so that we can more quickly respond. It also includes the addition of neighborhood planners, so that residents have a single point of contact within their neighborhood to schedule the repairs at their own convenience. Right now, we admit that a lot of our repairs are scheduled without any resident interaction, which doesn't ensure a positive outcome. So what we're looking to do is create that direct customer service link with our residents, schedule repairs at their convenience, and actually show up when we say we're gonna show up.
And has there been any consideration to that kind of reform with the call center? As you heard in Ms. Torres's testimony, it also seems to suffer from a, not being connected to the developments and to the residents in many regards, and residents feeling dismissed. How, what, what is the plan and training that is offered to call centers, and is there any thinking done around how to restructure it, so that there is improved quality service?
We still believe that the call center is the most efficient way of providing this service to over 400,000 residents across the city. The call center has information, again, on all the property management offices, and the availability of the maintenance workers. It is the first step in the process for, for reporting a repair. I think where most of the frustration actually lies is not, not in the fact, not in that initial call with the call center, but in the follow-ups that happen there, in the black hole that we hear from our residents, that many of our work orders fall into. And we're very conscious of that, and we understand that, that that's a real problem, and we're trying to solve for. So residents have that initial maintenance, but so many of our repair, our, our homes need so many repairs, that they require that skilled trade follow-up. And until work order reform, we didn't have that direct connection. So work orders went to waiting to schedule, and residents didn't know who to call, or how to contact to get that scheduled, or to find out, how long am I going to be waiting, what's gonna happen? And frankly, even now, with work order reform and our investment of 450, we still have long wait times, because we have this 633,000 backlog. So it's steps in the right direction, but we admit it's not perfect. The, that waiting time is where residents start to get frustrated and impatient, and call back the CCC, and find out what's going on. And now what we're trying to do is take some of the burden off that CCC, and have the residents call the planners for that and have the residents call the planners for that follow-up and to be able to talk to that planner about what's going to happen next in the process and free the CCC up to take the initial request and focus on that customer service at the front end.
But that's a system that you're rolling out. So what percentage of the NICA developments will actually engage in this process?
So everyone by the end of the year. So we're rolled out right now in Queen's Staten Island and the Bronx. Brooklyn is right now planned for August 1st and Manhattan for the end of September. And so by the end of this calendar year, work order reform will be fully implemented across the city.
And what will be the feedback loop for residents to let you know if we're achieving the goals of work order reform or not?
So we have been holding work order reform resident briefings, I would say, every two months or so. So started obviously just with Queen's Staten Island, then we've added in the Bronx, but we've now added in Brooklyn already in anticipation of the rollout so that they can hear the feedback. And the point of rolling out one bar at a time is that we are taking that feedback from both employees and residents on what's working and what's not working and improving the process as we go. So this is about continuous improvement, iterating, seeing, you know, this didn't work in Queen's Staten Island, let's do it differently in the Bronx, and so on and so forth. So actually, last night, we had a, we had one of those calls with our residents. And I'm happy to share the information on those calls with the council going forward so you can participate as well.
Fantastic. So can you explain how NICA records and tracks actual completion of work orders?
So all work order information is held in our MAXIMO system. That is our system of record on all work orders. Work orders that are closed or completed are closed with, you know, the goal is that work orders are closed with work done and with pictures proving that the work was done.
With pictures proving that it's done?
Yes.
I have pictures of work that was proposed to be done and was abysmal.
I understand that. And so we have a quality assurance department. And we have actually three oversight departments that were instituted as part of the 2019 HUD agreement. Quality Assurance, Compliance and Environmental Health and Safety. And they all work together to review work orders that have been done, look for improper practices, and really provide that, you know, insurance of compliance with rules and regulations.
Has there been any consideration to getting agreement from the resident that the work has been properly done?
Yes. Prior to COVID, we used to require a resident's signature on work orders as part of the closing. We stopped doing that as part of COVID because of the concerns of touching the work order devices. But I believe that is, I will double check. I don't want to misspeak, but I believe that resident signatures are coming back into the process.
Great. I also appreciate the improvements that are made in terms of sending the residents back, you know, documentation of their calls, because that is a burden they should not bear, although they do have, keep quite diligent track of the multitude of work orders that they put in and the circus of them getting closed when work is not even started. So thank you for that improvement. In terms of, I think I did not hear this correctly, but how much does it cost NICA to operate the call center?
Let me check that information. So for 2021, the total cost for the call center? Actually, I don't want to misspeak, and I have something that's confusing in front of me, so we will get back to you with that information.
So would it save money for NICA if the call center were just under the DO-IT calls?
I can't speak to a cost benefit analysis, but from an operational standpoint, I don't think there's an advantage of combining our call center with the 311 system because our call center, again, it takes very specialized information from our residents in order to transfer that to our workers and respond appropriately. So for example, we are going through a series of specific questions as to the problem that the resident is trying to report, whether it's a problem with a wall, what room is the wall in, what, you know, where's the wall, where's the problem within the wall? And so that kind of information is just more specialized. It also includes all of our maintenance worker schedules and our staff schedules, so it has information from our other systems in order to be able to say, I have a maintenance worker available at your property Wednesday from 1 to 4. Would you be available at that time? So that's a specialization that I think is best managed by NICA within NICA.
And in terms of, I guess this comes from some colleagues. Why doesn't NICA have a simple website where users can view the names of all the developments, complaints of tenants at these developments, and whether these complaints were resolved and when? So it is a question of transparency. Can you speak to that?
Understood. So actually, the state, the state just passed a bill this session that includes a searchable database of work tickets. And so we are working right now for compliance to publish that. And so it would be on our website. And what, once you have a work ticket number, you can then look up the work ticket and look at the status of that ticket while preserving any personable, personal information and privacy of the resident. So it would be removing any personal information. I do want to add something that we haven't spoken about as a addition to the CCC service. NICA has a very extensive app, the MyNICA app. It's also available, it's available as an app. It's also available as a desktop, like a desktop website. And residents are able to submit service requests, work tickets through the app. They are able to see the status of the work ticket at any time. They are able to track the scheduling of it. Right now, the app is available in Spanish and in English, but we are working right now on translation into also Russian and Mandarin, which we expect to have done this year as well. So the app also is a great tool for residents to have all that information at their fingertips. We have over 115,000 app subscribers right now.
See the last part, 115?
115,000.
And in terms of tenants with limited proficiency or without computers and broadband service, which is a prolific problem throughout the developments, how do residents get relief?
The NICA app is also available at our kiosks and all of our property management offices.
Does every development have a kiosk?
Yes.
And I guess I would assume any web interface would be available in multiple languages?
Yes.
Thank you. I feel like I could, I could keep going, but I, no, there are folks 10. But just see. Thank you for your patience.
No problem.
I do have many pages of questions. I think, I think maybe we will. Actually, one more question, and then I think I'd love to hear the testimony of the public. Does NICA support REZO 68 calling for the state legislator and HUD to increase NICA accountability by auditing the responsiveness of NICA managers to tenants?
So NICA right now is already under significant federal monitorship. So in 2019, when we signed the HUD agreement, it put in place a federal monitor. In addition to the federal monitor, we have HUD and the Department of Justice, Southern District, involved in extensive oversight of our agency. We have significant meetings with all of them. There are continual checkpoints as to our compliance with the HUD agreement metrics. The monitorship involves, again, compliance not just with the six pillar areas, which were, you know, everyone kind of thinks of as the HUD agreement, but I want to clarify that the HUD agreement also required a new organizational plan for NICA. And that organizational plan, our transformation plan, is where we bring in the issues of accountability and property management and doing an all-around better job. And HUD, the Southern District, and the federal monitor are ensuring compliance with those improvements within the transformation plan and the organizational plan. On a daily basis, we're involved in working with them to ensure that compliance. So I believe all of that is already well underway.
So under, in terms of the federal monitor, NICA is compelled to respond to all the, I guess, I'll say shortcomings or recommendations that is provided by the monitor?
Absolutely. And the HUD agreement requires frankly stricter requirements than some of the HPD enforcement. So, you know, for an HPD landlord that fails to provide heat and hot water, I could be wrong, but I believe there's 30 days until HPD acts with their enforcement tools. NICA is being held to, you know, 12, 24, and 48 hours for restoration of heat.
Which is often not the case.
There's obvious infrastructure challenges in meeting that, but the issue is that we are being monitored and forced to that level of compliance.
Right. And embedded in the question is the experience of the residents who feel like they do not get relief and there is no accountable agency. And in fact, I guess the question related to the resolution is, in terms of managers, you know, with 335 developments and multiple conditions, there hasn't been a consistent level of service provided to the residents at the development level and no transparency around what NICA is doing to ensure that it is providing appropriate level of service. So I think, I think with that, we can, oh yes, Councilmember Kagan, please.
I know it's like time is already, but I cannot just let it go, you know? Like, I can fill out City Hall right now. I can fill out City Hall right now. By residents of NICA developments in Coney Island in my district, who will tell you that they're calling, emailing every day about the same issues for months? And nobody, not just not doing anything, not even replying to them, not even saying, yes, we got your complaint. Forget about doing anything. And you mentioned federal monitor. I personally had several hours conversation with Mr. Bart Schwartz, I believe his name. And I told him in his face that like all of this monitoring doesn't work unless property manager loses his or her vacation. If for six months, same problem over and over again, and nobody did anything, then it will have an effect. That's why we need this resolution, and that's why we need not just monitoring, but accountability. Sorry.
Thank you so much for your testimony and participation today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We'll now move to public testimony. So please note that each panelist will be given three minutes to speak. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table when your name is called. For panelists who will be attending virtually, we will be calling on individuals one by one to testify. Once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant at arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. I'd now like to welcome Marceletta Davis to testify, followed by Christina Bueno, and then Loretta Brumfield. Marceletta Davis, you may begin when the sergeant calls time.
Your time will begin.
So we're having some trouble getting ahold of Marceletta Davis. We'll circle back to her. Oh, we see her.
Your time will begin.
You may need to accept the unmute request. Looks like you're still on mute.
Hello, hello. My name is Marcelette Davis. I'm familiar with the background. I have a black shirt on. I'm a woman, and I have a flowered band across my head, and I wear glasses and lipstick and earrings. And thank you for having me here. I am an individual advocate for the diversity of the deaf community, including sign language for the deafblind, hard of hearing, and those with hearing loss. And I want to discuss, specifically, I want to focus on technology related to calls for the 311 system. For people, when they call 311, for example, how I would do it, I use a video phone. And when I connect to 311, they don't. Let me clarify. I have direct ASL services, but it doesn't redirect for the ASL. So when I call directly to 311, first of all, I don't get referred to ASL Direct. The other thing is related to the app. So on my cellphone, for example, as an individual, I'm looking at the app on my cellphone, and it's very difficult to find the ASL Direct. It takes a lot of navigation to find ASL Direct. And that's a really big hassle to be able to find ASL Direct. That's one thing. And now I'd like to move on to the next item. When I'm communicating with the different members of this level for the deaf community, what I'm finding is that many of the members of the deaf community don't have a lot of experience with technology. We want our organization to be able to provide education for the members of the deaf community so that they can learn more about the technology. Also, in relationship to signing in English in ASL. This program has been in operation for nine years. And what I've noticed is, is that anytime
Time's expired.
There's a new features for 311. They do not communicate and provide that information to the deaf community. And so deaf people like myself, who are experienced with technology and know how to navigate the system, and I have to hunt and find this information, and then I have to inform the deaf community. It shouldn't be me. 311, I feel, when they develop new technology and new programs, they should have like, you know, a deaf person to sign and explain exactly what the new technology is about. And for example, Link NYC, the kiosk on the street, for example, I see a video message at Link NYC describing different things about 311, different videos. And then I ask deaf, the deaf community, do they understand the videos regarding 311? And many of them do not understand. They feel like they're missing a lot of information because there's no sign language access. And so depending on And so depending on the level of English or the visuals, the pictures, I suggest that you should have someone that is signing an ASL on the Link in NYC so that deaf people can have access, better access to 311. So moving on. In the past 2020, I was sharing during, you know, the COVID epidemic, that communication was very important. But what happened was, was the leaders that were involved in the deaf community, they themselves were hunting for information on COVID to share with the deaf community. And finally, they saw that they had to have an ASL interpreter and then they had better access. And that should also be happening in 2021. That also did happen in 2021. So 2021, when COVID began to decrease and they're in the different areas, they were reopening businesses again, but there were still problems continuing because the deaf community was behind in all of the information that was being provided. And so the leaders in the deaf community were continuing to try to find information and provide to the deaf community, current information. And we have a variety of people that have different beliefs. Some people didn't believe in getting the vaccination, some people did believe in getting the vaccination. That's their individual beliefs, but technology and information, there wasn't enough. It needs to be more visual and more, better technology for deaf access. That's a very important thing. Next. People who live in NYCHA or in public housing, what they've seen, what they've noticed is, is that many people who live in public housing are really far behind in the news with new policies and new programs. And often some of the information that's updated, like for 311, they have some flyers and they, you know, pass them out at houses, you know, under the door. And when members of the deaf community get these flyers, they're in English, it's not in ASL, that's not their first language, so they don't always comprehend everything they're reading. Approximately 60% of the deaf community who live in public housings do not have access to technology like video phones and the internet, and they're unable to get information. Many members of the deaf community, for example, a deaf person is dependent upon another member of their family or a member in their household that is hearing. And the deaf person has to ask them for information, but it's not the full information, it's reduced. When the hearing person gives them the information, it's not exact. And that has a real impact on their ability to know what's happening. So when they call 311 and they're transferred to ASL Direct, what happens sometimes is they're sent to the wrong location. For example, they will be like sending me to Queens HRA, but I live in New York, so I'm referred to the wrong borough. At the same time, ASL Direct in Queens, for example, in HRA, NYHRA, I have noticed if they have a problem connecting with the public housing, they will connect ASL Direct in Queens and they don't help us. They refer us to a different HRA area. And so that's where the confusion begins to happen. And I can visualize that ASL 311, ASL Direct for providing services should have should have ASL Direct, HRA Queens should be providing the correct information for HRA, for example
Time's expired.
HRA has their own line to ASL Direct and they should be for the others as well. HRA has a tendency to provide services in their local area. And I understand the different areas for HRA. However, the point is, is that ASL Direct is community-wide. And they need to use that system, but they cannot get response for the different HRA offices or areas, and that really causes a tremendous problem in general. And next, NYCHA, the buildings, they do not have box communication where the address can be connected to the building for repairs or different problems that's happening in the building for like the apartments. So when they inform box, some of the buildings have them and some of them do not. The office often struggles with technology. And most offices that are involved in NYC HRA buildings have not received practice or training on language access. And also, for example, the community, if they already have a contract with interpreting in ASL. For example, if a deaf person lives and they need to act in a building where they need to access the manager, the staff do not have training on how to obtain an interpreter. And I feel that there should be training and some sort of device where there's a VRI or some monitor, something for access to interpreting. The irony is, is that the language line provides 175 different wonderful languages access for everyone except for deaf people. They do not have access for deaf people, so we're left out again. I'm still wondering what NYC commitment. I feel like they're continuing to break their commitments, they make commitments again and again. So should we have a deaf contact person so that there would be a better quality access for the deaf community specifically regarding to technology? And once again, 60 to 85% of the deaf community here, who have moved here from another country, do not get information about direct access from the government. They meet other members of the deaf community who provide them information and that is just not appropriate. And for example, a hearing person from another country moves here and they have everything that has provided in their language, all the information, all the access, everything is beautiful. And they, you know, receive all the information needed. So where is ASL access? There is none. And again, you are trying to advocate for access, but when you think of access, you need to think of all languages which includes sign language. And also, I'd like to see what happens with 311, ASL Direct and the technology, the people that take care of for the deaf community or different deaf organizations that would be included in the loop. And any new technology, any new services, any new programs should be disseminated into the deaf community through NICA. And importantly, the deaf community needs to understand what is happening and what the improvements are. And not just once in a while, but you know, constant updates like everyone else would receive. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'd now like to welcome Christina Bueno to testify. After that, I'll be calling on Loretta Brumfield and then Robbie Reddy. Christina Bueno, you may begin when the sergeant calls time.
Your time will begin.
Hello, my name is Christina Bueno. And I'm the, I want to explain my background. I have colors behind me, a light is green. Who I am is I'm an activist involved with human rights, specifically deaf human rights and accessibility. And what Marceletta Davis recently commented about, I relate to what she's saying. I'd like to share my experience using 311. During the early summer of 2020, two years ago, I was depending upon the relay service. What that means is, is that there's a third party who uses sign language to help me communicate between other hearing people. And so I was calling 311 Direct and it would not go through. I had the interpreter there, so I was calling through the interpreter and 311 kept disconnecting, we could not get through. So I was thinking about what to do, I became very frustrated and I had to go to the internet and look to see where I could file a housing complaint related to what was happening in my apartment. There were some leaks, there were some bugs, different issues. And you know, that still had not been repaired. And so I was hunting on the internet to find another number for 311. So I don't remember, was 347 or 212 area code, but anyways, I did call through the relay service, through my video phone. And finally, I was able to get through and the person told me that I had to call through 311. And I told them, well, that's what I did. I started by calling through 311 and they said, sorry, can't help you, and hang up. So I called through 311 and couldn't get through. So then I hung up and I called back that nine-digit number again. And what happened is, I was connected to the same exact person and they said, you have to call 311. And I said, I've already done that and I cannot get through and I'm becoming very frustrated. So she went ahead and took the order from me and asked me, you know, to file a complaint against the property manager of the building. That was in 2020. So I requested for a free air conditioning. I heard you could get free air conditioning for senior citizen people and people with disabilities. So I called and told them, I'd like to request a free air conditioning unit. And after that, I never heard back from them and I never received the air conditioner. So now the manager in our building and another member that lives in our building, they have gotten air conditioning units. I asked the manager, but he ignored me and didn't help me. There's such a lack of communication. I'm not on their list, so they don't help me. I call 311 and I can't get help and I couldn't get an air conditioning unit. I called them, they never called me back. So now here we are in 2022. And a few weeks ago, I called 311 and I didn't remember everything that happened in the past, to be honest, but the same thing happened again. 311 kept disconnecting and I would hang up and call again. I called through the relay service again, thinking maybe the relay service technology, maybe with an interpreter, I would be able to get through, but I was not able to get through. Even with an interpreter, I cannot get through to 311.
Time's expired.
So I have to repeat again and again trying to get through, unable to get through. So how am I going to get fairness? How can this injustice be resolved? I live in stable housing and if part of the requirement doesn't accommodate, I'm a human, I have rights, I have a right to file a complaint for 311 not doing their job and not doing the repairs that are needed. So that was a long time ago, those should have been taken care of a long time ago and still yet today, they're not taking care of. I'm being ignored. My backup is 311 to get help and I can't get through. So then I have to call that nine-digit number and they don't want to help me and it's very frustrating, the same problem as what happened a couple of years ago. So the result was that before I even get through to talk to a person for 311, it took me 40 minutes to finally get through and I can't get through because they keep hanging up. So I wait 40 minutes to get through and then they hang up. And then I call the nine-digit number and then I wait another 40 minutes to get through and they don't want to help me. And I know other people that have disabilities other than a hearing loss. And they have equal access to get through on three one one, but the deaf community does not have equal access. Because I cannot call three one one directly and I have to try and figure out how to find an alternative way. Three one one does not let me connect. How do I connect to three one one? I feel like everybody else, you know, even with disabilities, but they can hear, have better access and the deaf community is left out of the three one one access. I'd like you to consider this and think about not leaving us to be the last to have access. Marcella Davis made a comment saying that you should have a deaf person that can work with you and different agencies to make sure that their programs are providing equal access for deaf people. This is a very important issue for deaf people. And it should be important for the hearing community as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I'd now like to welcome Loretta Brumfield to testify. After that, I'll be calling on Robbie Reddy and then Leisha Lu Kai. Loretta Brumfield, you may begin when the sergeant calls time.
Your time will begin.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Loretta Brumfield, L A U R E T T A, Loretta Brumfield. I'm the Association President for Coney Island Houses. I'm calling because when, when you call three one one for a NITIA complaint, they direct you automatically to the seven oh seven number, which actually just makes a ticket. When they make a ticket, if you have to have a scheduled person, if you have a broken pipe, they have to call a plumber. But you're supposed to have a plumber, a plasterer and a painter. So therefore the plumber is supposed to close the ticket and open the ticket for the painter, which they never do. And then you're waiting months for, to get on schedule for paint, for a plasterer. And a plasterer is supposed to open up a ticket for the painter, which they never do. And then you have to wind up calling again and then the painter takes months. So something that can be done within the three days takes over a year to get done because they're not doing it. They're just closing the ticket. Sometimes they close the ticket and they don't, never come back. And then you still have an open wall. That's what they do. I have three tickets since February, my personal self that's still open that I didn't even get scheduled for yet for three different things in my apartment. That's what happens. Also, living in Coney Island, when we have no heat, National Grid is in charge of heat in certain developments, which definitely minds Coney Island houses. Yeah, heat, the temperature has to be fifty-five below, which in Coney Island is always colder than other areas in New York City. Well, because we're surrounded by water. But National Grid is not allowed to come in the house and take temperature. So and also you cannot call National Grid and tell them that your heat is not good. So I have to call how NITIA, the seven oh seven number, tell them that I don't have any heat. Then NITIA comes to your apartment, check the heating apartment, they call National Grid. National Grid is supposed to come out, fix the heat and then call NITIA and they're supposed to come back and see if the heat is on in your apartment. One, if you call it and say no heat, if you have on any kind of your stove or anything, if they come in and they check the temperature, it's going to be above sixty-five because you're in and you're freezing. That's another thing. They're not being held accountable for that. National Grid cannot come in your apartment and check the temperature. NITIA has to do it. I don't understand why NITIA is just not in charge of turning back on the heat or giving you hot water. Also, they need to scale workers back to be NITIA workers instead of giving it to vendors because vendors, you have to wait six months or more years for a vendor to come. NITIA needs to be back in charge, have skilled workers, put these people into programs, make them skilled workers and come back and start working and doing the work for the development themselves and stop giving it to vendors. Also, the managers and the supers have to, need to be accountable for the way NITIA buildings look, for them just closing on your tickets and not doing the work. All, all housing workers need to be accountable. They have to be accountable for the work that's supposed to be done and they're not getting it done. If you call the management office, if you call a super, if you call seven oh seven, they have to be accountable for taking care of the tickets, not just shutting them down. Somebody has to be accountable and it needs to be either the property manager, super, assistant super. They're supposed to go through the builders, they're supposed to do building checks, they're not doing it. NITIA needs to be accountable for NITIA. They need to stop doing, giving vendors their jobs. They need to, they need these people back to school and get them skilled workers back, NITIA workers, instead of using vendors. Because the vendors is clearly not working because I have tickets open since February and still haven't been scheduled and appointment. So therefore they need to do, go back to the old way and letting NITIA take care of their own problems and being held accountable for their own problems because it's easy for them to blame National Grid for not giving us any heat or hot water. It's too many times in the winter that NITIA developments in Coney Island does not have any heat or hot water and it's too cold out here for that to be. So that's what they need to do and they need to be held accountable because they all go home to their warm homes and we're here freezing every winter. So that's what, that's what I needed to say.
Thank you. I'd now like to welcome Robbie Reddy to testify. After that, I'll be calling on Leisha Lu Kai and then Ross Joy. Robbie Reddy, you may begin when the sergeant calls time.
Your time will begin.
So I want to thank Chair Ung, Gutierrez, Aviles and the council members of the committees for holding this hearing and giving the Asian American Federation the opportunity to testify on language access needs of our community. My name is Robbie Reddy. I'll be speaking on behalf of and in place of Leisha Lu Kai. And I'm the advocacy, the Associate Director of Advocacy and Policy here at the Asian American Federation. Legislation like Intro two oh six and Intro two ninety-six introduced by Chair Ung will help illuminate the barriers our LEP New Yorkers face in accessing the most basic government services via three one one. At a time when our LEP communities are in crisis from accessing mental health services to navigating city inspection codes, the small business owners, to accessing food delivery services, providing additional information on the experiences of our LEP New Yorkers is critical. Language access has always been a primary barrier between our community and the services they need access to. So while three one one is a primary gateway, issues with telephonic interpretation have been consistent and well-understood by community-based organizations that have always shown up to help our vulnerable when city systems couldn't. Having language capacities already within city systems that our community members depend on and their staff is absolutely critical. To that point, for the first time, the city budget will support critical proposals like a community interpreter bank and worker co-ops related to language access that address the needs for a language access capacity by centering the communities who have it. Within these proposals, we will see the payoff in multiple ways, from providing employment opportunities in our immigrant communities to relieving strains on existing CBO capacity to provide interpretation, to addressing the serious gap in quality of language interpretation for the community that need it the most. As we mentioned on Monday at a contracts committee hearing, immigration policies are in such a state of flux that our communities will need sustained in language engagement to stay abreast of changing policies, processes and documents. And when it comes to assisting our small businesses in crisis, even when a service is much needed, it is crucial to provide an ease of accessibility for LEP immigrant business owners to access it. Throughout the pandemic, our community has been in crisis, seeking out assistance, seeking out mental health resources and basic need services. They've consistently come to our member organizations first and when attempting to reach city services have had difficult experiences that reinforce the need to reinforce the work our CBOs are doing and treat them as the experts in providing culturally competent and language access, language accessible services. In our work and the work of our member and partner organizations, we are consistently reminded that much of the language accessibility issues our communities grappling with relate to issues of capacity. Our communities are often the last to know about key information and the pandemic has demonstrated that there is still much work to be done in making sure our communities, many of whom are our frontline workers, benefit from the work of our city agencies. Legislation like Intro two oh six and two ninety-six are steps in illuminating where the need is and validating and addressing the experiences of our community members. AAF stands ready to work with city council to make sure city services are as responsive as our community members need them to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And since Mr. Reddy mentioned that he'll be test, testifying in place of Leisha Lu Kai and I can see she's not on the Zoom. I'll now call up Ross Joy to provide testimony. After that, I'll be calling on Victor Bach. Ross Joy, you may begin when Reddy.
Good afternoon. My name is Ross Joy. I work at the Red Hook Community Justice Center. Thank you Chair Aviles, Chair Ung and Chair Gutierrez for listening to me and having us here today. The Red Hook Community, at the Red Hook Community Justice Center, we partner with NITIA residents and NITIA staff, HRA and many others to prevent evictions, ensure repairs and expand opportunity. As the Center for Corning Innovation Project, citywide, we partner with the city council and communities across the city to improve safety, ensure and ensure a fair, effective and humane justice system. At Red Hook, our community court partners is a community court in partnership with the New York State Unified Court System. It includes a housing court where public housing tenants can bring their complaint in court against NITIA for violating this city council's local laws. Those local laws are known as the Housing Maintenance Code. These tenant actions are called in court as an HP court case. Public housing tenants, just like private tenants, deserve the protection of this city council's housing maintenance laws. We agree. We very much welcome this council, this committee's actions last year passing local law one ninety-two that would even expand more public housing tenants being able to access and report their complaints against the Housing Maintenance Code. However, as was stated today, this is still not implemented and falls far short of still not treating NITIA tenants like private tenants being able to have their complaints heard by HPD, which is the only agency that's required to enforce the Housing Maintenance Code. When tenants' complaints are investigated by HPD, we do see results. Violations are cited and tenants, and it gives tenants more direct, independent power to back up their claims. When you say you don't have gas, you can get a housing code violation with a, with it being cited. So far this year, just this year alone, fifty-four Red Hook public housing residents have brought their complaints to court and have received an HPD inspection through their HP, HP court case. An alarming four hundred and one violations have been documented. These include forty-six C emergency, immediately hazardous violations. There's a chart on the back that breaks this down. Some violations of note includes forty-four violations of leaks, twenty-eight violations of mold and a hundred and sixty-four violations of peeling paint or plaster. When tenants come to court, they very often show us tickets that have been open for months, if not years. Yet HPD routinely cancels NITIA public housing tenants' complaints in their internal system. They do not comply with this city council's open data law requirements related to violations discovered at NITIA and does not even have a proper record of NITIA residential addresses, oftentimes sending inspectors to the wrong addresses, known as an AK addresses. You can see an example of that tenant, the tenant cancellation notice in the, in the packet, which explains that it's been, their tenants' complaints have been canceled just for being in NITIA and instructs confusingly, if you have, these conditions still exist, to please file a new complaint with three one one. We definitely agree that residents should have access to the court system, but like private tenants, they should have access to HPD directly to submit violations. I will just say that residents, we, we hundred percent agree that NITIA should have a high-quality communication with their residents and that should be, we welcome continuing innovation with that. The work order reform, we're very excited about as well. But there's got to be a backstop and this city council has established that backstop in local laws. Unfortunately, a lot of our residents end up using nine one one in replace of three one one. We very often see sewage backflow problems, electrical fires, many other issues that could have been prevented by a three one one complaint that end up and escalate without action and turn into a nine one one complaint. I would welcome the city council to continue to investigate NITIA's compliance with local law. I was, I think it was very encouraging that VP Ava Treble did admit that NITIA residents should have an access to have their complaints heard as code violations, not just mere tickets. In Red Hook alone, just this past two months, we've had three gas leaks that are now affecting twenty-seven different residents. Councilmember Kagan also expressed those leaks. This city council passed in two thousand and fifteen, local law forty-seven that requires all landlords, including NITIA, to issue notices of service interruption when these gas leaks occur, encouraging landlords to communicate with their, with the residents what occurred, what and what action steps in order to restore service. HPD is the only agency that's required to make sure landlords are enforcing that. And this code of silence between NITIA and HPD that they're both not holding each other accountable just can't continue anymore. We thank you so much for your partnership and continue to work on these very difficult issues. And but we, with hundred percent agreement that public housing is essential to New York, is so important to our communities and we want to continue to see it thrive and strengthen. Thank you.
Quick question. Thank you so much both for your patience of sitting through the hearing the entire time, your work and your testimony and providing very clear examples of some of the serious problems. I think one of the things it's clear that we were not able to address in this hearing is how city agencies close tickets as well and what the feedback loop and the areas of discretion are between the agencies, back to the three one one system, back to residents. So I think where you've highlighted a new area of of questions that we need to follow very clearly. I was curious if you could explain a little bit from your perspective how you have, in your experience with so many residents in Red Hook, how, what their experience of the call system has been and where there are particular areas of improvement that you would suggest.
Yes, thank you. Interestingly, as a state court help center, we are, I often do receive referrals from three one one callers myself. And so I'm experienced with that. If you call in South Brooklyn, have a tenant complaint, the three one one operator will often sometimes ring my, my desktop phone. So I can see it both ends when helping people make calls and as well as receiving calls through the three one one system. I think there's a fundamental, there's a deep disparity that residents in public housing just don't feel like three one ones for them. And that's because too often the agencies are told like, no, you need to call NITIA. This is the wrong type of government. And that's, as we know, is just simply not the case. Speaking directly about NITIA's current systems, again, I think we the all-promising reform from work order reform is this neighborhood planner. We were promised a neighborhood administrator as well and that's more localized. If you think about it, their, their borough level operations were so disconnected and to see the agency moving back to our neighborhood approach to its management process is very encouraging. And having a neighborhood planner, someone who could actually schedule your repairs, having that person's name and number accessible, we're very excited to see because we know how difficult it is to call the seven oh seven. We also use the seven oh seven a lot for other areas, not just repairs, but if you need help recertifying your lease or asking about a rent charge, you have to call seven oh seven as well. Accessing NITIA's lockbox unit is quite the difficult one. It probably takes ten or, ten or more punches to get to that unit. And also we found it difficult sometimes, especially seniors, folks who are ineligible but non-citizens who reside in public housing and keep a different social security number on file, it's very difficult for them to access the self-service portal. And we really do rely on that hotline to problem solve. And that's not always something that the property management office has access to as well.
Thank you so much. You have hit on several other hearings for the future for sure and things we need to follow up on. We appreciate your testimony and your work.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I have one question. Thank you so much for this testimony and certainly the, the work that you are all doing at Red Hook. My question is, what do you think, do you think three one one in this instance, like I thoroughly appreciated ironically the responses that NITIA tenants get when their issues are not resolved, pointing to have them call three one one ironically enough. It is the cycle that never ends. But what in your opinion or in your experience, do you think is the role in expediency, efficiency that three one one can play here? Because I think a lot of what you're saying, and I think you're right, is that HPD has a responsibility here. NITIA tenants are tenants, right? They have a responsibility because NITIA has proven itself to be colossally ineffective. itself to be colossally ineffective. So what in your opinion do you think is the most ideal streamlining and what role can we push, for example, 311 into making that happen or a reality?
Yes, absolutely. I think there needs to be some more concrete conversations with HPD about their role with public housing. I think too long, their still stances, they're gonna, they say they're hiding behind the city charter's conflict of interest, that there can't be inter-agency accountability against another agency. I think that's a disservice to the, what the city charter says is public service is a public trust and we need this efficiency and transparency. And there's no, there's no conflict there in making sure that it's quite opposite, that canceling a tenant's complaint where there is a documented mold, leak, and electrical issues and just simply canceling those, that's definitely a disservice of public trust. So I think HPD itself needs to be held accountable to what is, clarifying what their role is when residents, like public housing residents, are identifying housing maintenance code violations. Again, we want to encourage NITIA to improve and continue to communicate with their tenants. That is fundamental. The CCC was, I think, an idea from a decade ago that would centralize and optimize. I think there should be a balance of that localized communication, but NITIA should always have, be held responsible for her communicating and talking with their residents. Independent of that, the city of New York needs to make sure that its local laws are also respected. A lot of mention was Ava Tribble often mentions is a priority of honor that she's trying to put me out of business. And that's the type of accountability that we want to see that outside oversight brings in and sheds light on the process. Work Order Reform, as was mentioned, was only brought about due to federal oversight and local oversight is even more essential. HUD supports that. HUD says that local and state laws need to be respected. NITIA is a state agency, city chartered, like MTA, the city, state public housing law also says that NITIA needs to be following city local laws. But who's applying those local laws? Tenants can go to court and get those lies of laws, but we want to, we should expand that access, especially as this crisis is not going to go away with these capital funding. And that's what the Housing Maintenance Code says. The Housing Maintenance Code says that even if the buildings are so dilapidated and they need to be replaced, if families are still living there, we need to ensure that there's basic healthy indecency, even while we try and make a plan to replace them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd now like to welcome Victor Bach to testify. After that, I'll be calling on Karen Blundell. Victor Bach, you may begin when the sergeant calls time.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Victor Bach with the Community Service Society, where I'm a housing policy analyst. Councilmember Aviles made quite clear the fact that despite Local Law 127, NITIA residents continue to be denied access to 311 and local code enforcement services. NITIA, like any landlord, is required to comply with city health, housing, and building codes. And I think it's time that NITIA residents were recognized as an integral part of the city and entitled to the same services that any other tenant is under the, under public services provided by the city. To, the argument that the NITIA call center provides equivalent, parallel services doesn't hold water. Given the enormous number of, I know that NITIA is making progress, that it's working against enormous financial constraints, but there's, it has a huge number of condition deficiencies that do not parallel the conditions low-income tenants face in other kinds of situations. To make matters worse, NITIA has traditionally been exempted from having any violations listed in the public databases maintained by HPD and the Department of Buildings, databases to which any private tenant can find information on violations cited and their status as to whether or not they've been cured. I think it's time to, for your committees, I would urge you to reconsider Local Law 127 and strengthen it. Apparently, despite its passage, virtually nothing has changed. Nothing has changed. I'm not quite sure why it had to be passed at all. It needs to be strengthened to provide full access to NITIA residents to the full range of 311 and code enforcement services. In addition, I would urge your committees to change the city's administrative code and end NITIA's exemption from having its violations publicly visited in HPD and DOB databases. Otherwise, we will have no transparency or accountability and what happens in NITIA will continue to stay in NITIA. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd now like to welcome Karen Blundell to testify. Karen Blundell, you may begin when the sergeant calls time.
Your time will begin.
Thank you. This has been, thank you first to Alexa Aviles and to the rest of the city council for having this hearing today. It was very informative for me to understand more about the residents who's, used to be public housing residents who are now RAD and also subsequently in the future, what happens to those in the preservation trust in regards to being able to call 311 and how that works. So I really appreciate that information. In my opinion, not just my opinion, but in the opinion of the mayor, the mayor said that NITIA has been a ship, or almost like a airplane with no cockpit, and that he was going to design a dashboard just for these type of records and for things to be initiated on a city level. So I'm hoping that all this conversation actually leads to that happening for NITIA residents on the city level. But I'm also going to say that I did sit in with the Work Order Reform meeting yesterday and I thought, in general, it went well and that it's worth a try. My only concern is that we don't have enough trades and what normally happens is places like Red Hook don't get the expert journeyman that they deserve, especially in a development that's over 70 years old. So sometime it compounds the problem when we have apprentice or new people coming in and not the right oversight in regards to their training and, you know, getting used to the job. So that's a concern of mine in regards to why I would like for the ticket 707 to be given a chance to do a better job. There has been a transformational plan in place in NITIA. That plan, NITIA's like a Titanic. You cannot just turn the NITIA ship around overnight. But I think that with the help from our community residents and our elected officials and the NITIA transformational plan, we have been doing a lot better at discussing these things and being more transparent around where the glitches are for residents, whether they're in Section 9, which is standard public housing, or Section 8 RAD conversions. So I really thank you and appreciate that. But I still feel like New York City Housing Authority is so huge in New York City that it does deserve a separate customer service line that is just better equipped with handling the work orders and callbacks to the tenants because it's so huge in New York City. So I'm going to yield my time and thank you for having me today.
Thank you so much, Ms. Blundell. I would like to follow up question. I hear you in terms of the sentiment of needing a separate specialized system, given, I guess, the scale and scope of the work and the specificity. What is your experience in terms of, obviously we know there's a giant backlog. Are, what's your experience with the call center now in terms of, what do you hear residents experiencing in terms of language access and follow-up calls and elements like that that would maybe put residents at ease if they knew the process that was coming? It always feels like they don't know. So I was curious if you could tell a little bit about that.
Yes, I agree with that. And that is because, Councilmember, the transformation of NITIA is very recent. And to be quite honest, I did work on it with a lot of different departments and I can give you an example. I asked them at one point, could they start stuffing the envelope, the billing envelope with flyers and notices about different things to help us stay informed. And I must admit that it was so new to me and with the pandemic and everything else, for quite some time, I was not opening it up to look at that because I was doing my rent payments electronically. So then I had to say, wow, I asked for this upgrade and here's another glitch. And there's one more glitch and that is that a lot of people are not going to tell you whether it's a language barrier or literacy barrier that they're not able to read, Councilmember. And, you know, so that's another issue, especially now with COVID brain fog as another exasperating aspect of why people can't concentrate on all these different elements in regards to just wanting to live in a safe, decent place. So that's one example of something that was new, but I would also push a little further and ask them to stay up with the times and maybe put a QR code that actually speaks each person's language based on the pressing of number one, two, or three on a phone so that I don't have to just wait to get this in the mail to read it, but I actually get an alert from NITIA that actually audios the message to me as opposed to just assuming that people can read. Or speak English.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for that. And thank you for highlighting the element of literacy. I think that's one we did not talk very much about and is a barrier for much of our community. I appreciate that. Thank you for your testimony and your work.
Thank you, Chair. The last two panelists who had registered were Noel Hidalgo and Judith Goldiner. I don't see Noel or Judith on the Zoom, or Noel and Judith here in person. It looks like the answer is no. So if you're on the Zoom and we missed you, please use the Zoom raise hand function now. If you're in person and we missed you, please raise your hand. And seeing no hands, I'll turn it over to Chair Ung to close this up.
Thank you for participating in today's hearing. I'm closing the hearing now.